Okay.
I'd like to reconvene the City Council regular meeting then as of January 25, 2011. Madam Clerk.
Record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Is there a closed session report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The City Council is met in closed session to address the issues that are reflected on the open session agenda. However, just prior to the going into closed session, the council acted on a unanimous vote to add Morn versus City of Newport Beach, which has threatened litigation arising out of the Morningside Development Agreement in Lido Isle, and it added it to its closed session agenda based upon developments that have occurred after the agenda was posted and require the council's response prior to the next regular meeting. With respect to all of the matters on the agenda, the council took no reportable action except for with respect to Basabe, that's B-A-S-A-B-E, versus Avila, and it voted 7-0 to authorize the defense of that matter.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with the pledge allegiance and following that, the invocation, so if you'll remain standing, and I'd like Councilmember Rozansky to lead the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join with me in prayer. Loving God, as we gather together tonight, we are reminded that although we bring different stories and unique backgrounds, that we are indeed all your children. We pray your blessing upon our leaders tonight, and we pray your blessing upon those in our communities that are there for us, our firefighters, our police officers, our teachers, our community leaders. And especially tonight, as our nation is receiving a State of the Union address, we just pray for the leaders of our nation, that we would all seek to share your love. In your name, amen.
Okay, we have no presentations this evening, but we do have a proclamation. Is Larry Porcelli in the audience? He is. Larry, if you'd like to step to the podium. Larry is with Regency Theaters, and Larry, I'd be pleased to read this proclamation, and then if you'd like to comment, and then we'll take a picture or two. Whereas February 6, 2011 marks the 100th anniversary of the birth of Ronald Reagan, and whereas Ronald Reagan served the people of Newport Beach, the state of California, and the United States as governor from 1966 to 1974, and as president from 1980 to 1988, and whereas as governor Ronald Reagan protected California open space, instituted protections to our environment, reformed state government, and expanded the state economy, and whereas Governor Reagan noting the potential damage to the Newport Beach community from the then-proposed Pacific Coast Highway, said on February 3, 1967, quote, "This administration does not believe that a man in Sacramento can outline the best route for a freeway in Newport Beach", unquote. How novel. And whereas as president Ronald Reagan expanded freedom throughout the world, brought economic growth to our country, and restored America's confidence at a difficult time in our history, and whereas on multiple occasions, to illustrate the value of volunteerism, President Reagan told a story of young people filling sandbags to protect Newport Beach homes during a strong Pacific storm. And whereas on January 27, 2011, the film Ronald Reagan and American Journey, directed by Robert Klein, will have its world premiere at the Regency Lido Theater in Newport Beach, and whereas Newport Beach citizens have organized to provide and fund a permanent public memorial to President Reagan to be located in Newport Beach, now therefore I, Michael Hen, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, hereby proclaim February 6, 2011, as Ronald Reagan Day in Newport Beach, and witness thereof, I have set my hand and seal, and the seal of the City of Newport Beach to be affixed this 25th day of January 2011. Larry, congratulations.
Thank you.
On behalf of the President, I guess.
Thank you.
Do you have any, would you like to make a comment or two, and then we'll come down and take some pictures?
We just are very honored, and thank you very much for, to be a part of the city's honoring of this great man, and we just thank you so much that anything we can do, we're happy to do, and it's wonderful to receive this from the city, so we thank you all very much, Mr. Curry. Thank you.
All right, I would invite any council member that wants to come down for the picture, but most particularly Councilmember Curry and Councilmember Hill, who had a personal relationship with the President. Let's take a picture. Very good. Notice to the public?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilmember Hill, please.
I would just like to announce that along with other council members, I had the opportunity of attending the OPUS Network Helping 100 Businesses in 100 Days, the Business Accelerator Class or Course that was offered at Oasis Center this last Saturday. It was a very exciting environment. It was one of the first major adventures of the city economic development activity in support of business in this community along with the chambers. It was attended by over 200 participants, and it was just a tremendously stimulating and exciting and successful day, and I congratulate everybody in our economic development staff and our chambers for pulling off a significant program that will continue for 100 days now.
Very good. Councilmember Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
We'll have a meeting of our bicycle committee. They've been very well attended, and this, it'll be Monday, February 7, at 4:30 at the fire conference room here at City Hall, and we are going to be having a presentation from Charlie Gandy on what Long Beach has been doing. They've been a very big leader in bicycle lanes and charros and that sort of thing, so we'll see what they're doing.
Very good. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I'd just echo Councilman Hill's comments about the success of the small business event at Oasis, and it's, the city certainly sent a strong signal that we're going to be proactive about helping our small businesses. And if you happen to have missed the event, there's going to be a makeup session this Saturday at Oasis, 9:00 AM. I'd highly recommend it if you're look, if you're considering that you may need to make some improvements to your business and look at it objectively, so, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Curry?
There are two more days left in Newport Beach Restaurant Week, so I encourage everybody to get out and try some new places. We found some great places during the course of the weekend, and it's a great event for the entire city. I was privileged to participate in the police promotion process this year at the ceremony that we had along with Mayor Hen, and we have some great new promoted officers for our department, and apropos of the previous presentation, I would just note the premiere of the film Reagan and American Journey on Thursday evening at 7:30 at the Regency Lido. We will also have a clay model of the Newport Beach Reagan Memorial for display for the first time there, and you'll have the opportunity to meet the artist for those of you who attend. Thank you.
Councilmember Selich?
Well, this last Saturday, I was able to attend the 1-1 Marine Foundation First Annual Beach Challenge. It's a fundraiser that was held adjacent to the Balboa Pier to raise money to assist Marines with unexpected expenses when they're training and deployed overseas. This is money for their families. There's about 1,000 people there and 150 participants. I think it was about a mile and a half, maybe two-mile course down the beach and back. A lot of obstacles on it. Wisely, I chose not to participate and just watch. Lot of encouragement from the Marines that were there on the participants to help them go through the course. There was live music and sponsor booths, marine displays with military equipment there, and they raised a little more than $12,000, and works, plans are in the works for another repeat of this event next year in 2012, so I think it was a pretty successful event for our Marines.
Great. I hope to participate next year.
Maybe I will.
Oh, good. We'll put a little, we'll put a little, we'll put a little bet on it. That was it. All right. Okay, I have a few announcements as well. Following up on the 1-1, there was a major event on January 13 in the evening called Mess Night. This is a, we've done, I guess, two or three of these in the past. This, too, was a benefit for the families of the 1-1 Marines. It was held at the Balboa Bay Club. It was attended by almost 400 people. It was a lot of fun. The Marines organized the whole event this year, and you may or may not know that Mess Night is sort of a way to roast each other over the course of dinner, and there's fines involved and other fundraising initiatives, and I'm not quite sure how much Mess Night raised this year, any idea, but I'm sure it was a successful event by the attendance and the dollar amount of fines that were assessed on the various tables during the evening. It was a lot of fun. I'd encourage anyone, the Marines are actually deploying in February, so I'm not exactly sure when the next Mess Night will be held, but our thoughts and prayers are certainly with the Marines of the 1-1, as they are redeployed probably to the Middle East. And then there is an e-waste collection event at the Newport Coast Community Center. You can bring your old laptops, phones, printers, whatever it might be, and drop them off. It's on Saturday, February 5. This is a great thing that the city sponsors. I believe it's goodwill that helps us with that. Do you remember, Dave? I think it's goodwill. Yeah. And it's a good way to get those things recycled and get them out of the regular waste stream, so I'd encourage everyone to participate with that. I'm going to. It's from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM on Saturday, February 5, at the Newport Community Center, Newport Coast Community Center. Also on February 5, and this will make my timing a little tight to drop off my e-waste, there is a council priority setting session. This is at the New Oasis in Corona Del Mar. This is an activity that's held once a year whereby council meets in public setting, hopefully with a lot of interaction from the public, to determine its priorities for the coming year. It's an important meeting, and it helps set the tone for the whole rest of the year and how we allocate resources. It has impact on our budget, and many other things flow from this. So I would encourage members of the public, please attend and speak your mind about this. It's a fairly interactive session, and it's a good chance to really understand where the city is going to be headed on its main issues for the coming year. That begins at 8:30 in the morning at the Oasis on February 5. That's a Saturday. Just to give you a sense of the other events that I've attended, you know, over the last couple of weeks, and I only mention this because I want to give the public a sense of that the variety and depth of organizations that are involved in the City of Newport Beach to help make this a great city. I attended the Sister Cities Annual Dinner on January 20. Sister Cities involves student exchanges between our sister cities in Japan and in Mexico and in France. It was a very nice event, and that organization really holds up a nice cultural element, I think, in our community. Also attended the Speak Up Newport presentation on January 12, where we talked about the Lido Marina Village land use plans. Speak Up Newport is a very active organization on behalf of a number of things that are done every year in the city, including the mayor's dinner on February 11. I also attended the launch party for the Restaurant Week up at Pelican Hill. The Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce is a very active organization, one of the sponsors of the OPUS 100 event that you heard about earlier, and they had an installation luncheon on January 18. There was a Rhine Channel dredging outreach meeting. This is for the residents in the Rhine Channel area to help them understand what's happening with that dredging program, which really is lined up now to begin, probably in August or so of this year. And then there were multiple DARE graduations. DARE stands for Drug Abuse Resistance Education. It's a nine-week intensive program that's given to sixth graders throughout the elementary schools in Newport Beach, we're one of the few cities that still sponsors a program like this, and I think it's a very nice opportunity to send a message, communicate with sixth graders while they're still hopefully malleable on forming their attitudes about resistance to drug use and alcohol abuse. And lastly, I have an announcement. I know Councilmember Curry is proud of the announcement that he made regarding President Reagan, and if you want to turn down the lights a minute, I have an announcement to make that I'm fairly proud of, in fact, very proud of. Up on the screen is my newest granddaughter. She was born a week ago today at Hoag Hospital, as you can see, and I feel like I should one-up you here, Councilmember Curry. Her name is Reagan Victoria Berry. And Mr. City Attorney, is it, is it okay for me to accept a product placement fee for that photograph? From Hoag Hospital? Okay. We had, we had a very good experience at Hoag Hospital. They did a great job. Okay, and with that, we're done with announcements, and we're on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 20 are considered by the council to be routine and will be all enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The City Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, several items voting no on four. I wanted to pull 17, and then on number 20, introduce a provision. I think the city manager has the language that relates to the transparency that we discussed at our study session, so I don't know if we can do that on the fly. Maybe we should hear what he'll have to say.
Does that item need to be pulled to handle that?
Why don't we, if that's okay, because there's a couple of typos I noticed, too. We might as well get them all taken care of here.
So what item number was?
20.
20, okay. All right, Councilmember Curry?
Nothing to pull?
Councilmember Selich?
Just to point a clarification, this Exhibit D that we've been handed, that's included in the item number eight?
I was going to do that verbally, but if you do that, yes, there's an Exhibit D that's in the, that's out front that adds the definition of dinghy or tender to item eight, and that's relating to the pier time limits.
Okay, that's it.
All right, Councilmember Hill?
Yes, items number one and number 11, please.
And Councilmember Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, do any members of the public want to pull any items? Please step to the lectern and identify yourself.
My name is Milo, number four.
Okay. All right, any other members of the public wish to pull an item?
My name is Tim Mosher, number two, 18, and 20, I think you already have listed.
Two and 18? Okay.
Number 15.
Number, you are, sir, can you identify yourself?
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar, thank you.
Number 15, okay. All right, any other items to be pulled from consent calendar by the public? All right, well, I presume we still have some consent items that we can approve, so I'll entertain a motion on that.
I move the affirmative action of the consent calendar, numbers one through 20, except for numbers one, two, four, 11, 15, 17, and 18. Was 20 pulled?
And 20.
And 20.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well then, we'll go to the items that were pulled, and item number one, Councilmember Hill, you pulled that?
Just a minor amendment or addition to the minutes, if you would, page three. The, up from the bottom, the third major paragraph that starts with Councilmember Hill, the fourth line down starts with opposed relinquishing the Findlay Avenue access, express concerns about needing more pedestrian pods, not just the pedestrian pods. And that's it.
Okay. Any conver-
And there was also an amendment for Laura Curran.
Yes, that's, that's in front of us. Citizen Laura Curran had requested that change.
Move the minutes be approved as-
And Don Howard, same thing. There's a little one on top of that, just so it's clear.
That's correct.
I move the minutes be approved with the three amended changes.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number four. Excuse me, two, Mr. Mosher.
My name is Tim Mosher. I asked to have this item pulled for discussion so that I could remind you, as I did in October, of the city's obligation under Charter Section 412 to read at least the title of each ordinance and resolution before it is adopted. As you know, ordinances have titles that begin something like, quote, "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, et cetera, et cetera," end quote. Item two in the agenda boilerplate directs- Item two in the agenda boilerplate directs the clerk to read the titles, but the clerk may correct me. I believe you just adopted three ordinances and two resolutions, and I don't recall anybody reading their titles. In fact, I don't even think the correct titles are listed in the agenda. This may seem as trivial and inconsequential to you as the council's obligation to hear grievances and transact business at two regular meetings every month, but it is a formality that the electorate of the city requires before your actions are binding on us. And it is one which the city manager, as the chief enforcer of the charter, should remind you of. From the reading of the minutes of past meetings, I have the impression that our councils have probably been ignoring this obligation since about 1994. I'm not asking you to correctly reenact all the improperly enacted ordinances and resolutions of the past 16 years, but I see no justification to continue to neglect such a clear and obvious provision of the charter. That seems embarrassing for a gold standard city to have in its agenda, a statement that the clerk will be reading the titles and then not having her read them. Thank you.
Okay. Comment on that from council? I think the city attorney ought to respond to that.
I believe I responded to that in October. This is a convention utilized by the city, which is part of its culture and does not result in any failure to report or give information to this, to the public. All of our agendas are on the web. All of the agenda items are on the web. All the ordinances and resolutions are on the web. It's a nuance that exists. The council has the power to control its own agenda, and I believe it's not anything that you must take, take action on differently than you're doing it.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to?
Move the action.
Move the action? I guess they're really, yes, we need to move the action, I think. Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Let's vote. All right.
Counselmember, motion carries unanimously.
Okay. And now we're on item number four.
I'm a musician, and I'm concerned about this particular resolution that you're considering passing. I understand that your concerns are very legitimate. I don't like drunk drivers any more than you do. I understand the problem of too much noise and waking people up. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with the police. They're very decent people. They're very helpful. They're essential. They've helped me personally, so I'm not saying anything anti-police. But the police are not musicians and they don't know creative things. And music is a First Amendment right, and there's a long history in this, in this country of problems with the police and musical performance. I'm concerned that there's a single person, whether it's the police chief or anybody else, who does the investigation, then holds the hearing, and then makes a decision, and then imposes punishment. I'm concerned that the thing is done in writing rather than having the public actually be able to speak. I'm concerned that the appeal doesn't go to the city council or some other board rather than just to another city official. I think there is a big possibility of abuse, and I'm not criticizing the people who are currently in power. A famous example is Ray Charles, who the police chief ordered him to perform before a white-only audience. He insisted the audience should be integrated or he would not perform. The police chief told him that he was in violation of the law and would be banned from performing in Georgia. For decades, Ray Charles was forbidden to perform in Georgia until the state legislature of Georgia passed a law restoring his right to perform there. Here in California, the Red Hot Chili Peppers ran into problems with the Santa Monica Police and had, had to perform elsewhere before being able to come back to Southern California, their home. There have been a number of musicians that you've never heard of who've had problems with the police because something happened in the crowd, and the musicians end up being blamed for what happens in the crowd. There are blues, punk, jazz, hip-hop, rock, and R&B, which are all now considered classic American art forms, have all had problems with police across the country. Here in Orange County, especially in Anaheim, and I know Long Beach is not in Orange County, but also in Long Beach, punk music had a huge problem. Orange County was one of the founding places of punk music, where police just didn't understand it, didn't understand the crowd, didn't want that kind of people. We've also seen this used against blacks and against Hispanic audiences to prevent them from being able, and again, not saying anything about the current police, but this kind of power all in one person gives me some real concerns as a musician. That's, you know, we've seen these kinds of problems with hip-hop now. We see it, because you had mentioned DJs were included in your ordinance, with hip-hop, we see that often it brings a audience of color, which is sometimes some police, and again, not criticizing Newport Beach police, because they are truly excellent police. I've had positive experiences with them. But that's the essence of my concern, is I'm really concerned about this much power over live music being put into the hands of a single government official with no chance to appeal to the city council, or if you're understanding what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
I think I am. Okay. There is an appeal under this to the city manager.
Right.
And so there is an appeal right. And we did have a fairly thorough discussion of this issue at the last council meeting, but does, do any other council members wish to make any comments regarding this?
Well, Councilwoman Daigle and I had the same concern about the appeal, and we lost on the vote. But we also know that it's not in concrete. And if we do feel that it's not working, we can always come back and, and make further changes to it. So I will still not vote for it, but I have great confidence in our chief of police. He had apparently a very good record in Long Beach in dealing with it, and also our city manager. Still, I think we should do it.
Councilman Hill?
This ordinance, at least by my understanding, is not an ordinance focused on musicians. It's an ordinance on the operators of restaurants to allow them to have music. So if there's an issue as to the type of musician or something of that sort, that would be between the musician and the operator, not between the musician and the police.
No, sir. Are there any other council comments? Does anyone, does any other member of the public wish to comment on this? Seeing none.
I will move the action.
Second. All right. Please vote.
With Councilmembers Daigle and Gardner voting no, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 15, Mr. Nichols.
Four 11, I think.
I can't count today. I'm sorry. Item number 11, Councilmember Hill.
This is the issue related to the inspection of grease traps. And I had a couple of questions of staff. Number one, will there be a charge to the restaurants for this required inspection process?
In the past, Councilmember Hill, we have not charged the restaurants for this inspection process because we think it's so essential to keeping our bay and our ocean free of sewer spills, that we haven't charged them for that. I suppose it's something we always could think about doing if, if indeed we needed to, but right now it's a free service to them, beneficial more to our system.
All right. Well, I would, I would be concerned over it if we were going to charge them for it. My second question, I noticed in some of the detail that the consultant is suggesting by their standards that the minimum size of a grease trap would be 750 gallons. For those existing restaurants that are in operation that have a functioning grease trap that is not of that size, does that mean that they're going to fail the test by these consultants?
Not at all. It just means they're, they have to be a little bit more frequent oftentimes in their testing, depending, sorry, in their maintenance of the grease interceptor, depending on the kind of food they provide to. We don't require anyone to go back and reinstall, install a larger grease interceptor than is there already. If they were doing new improvements, though, we would ask them to install a larger one.
Thank you.
All right. Any other council comment? All right. We should provide for public comment on this. Anyone wish to comment on this one? All right. Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Now, item number 15, Mr. Nichols.
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. This has to do with some of the, what's happened already on your council. I believe we're not getting enough definition in our, in our brochures on what's going on. And consequently, it's very difficult for the public to understand what's happening, particularly in your consent calendar. And your consent calendar is 85% of your total calendar, so it's, maybe reading the titles would be very important and so forth. Now, what it, with regard to the water main transmission, it's not clear when I was reading that whether that was a water or a sewer main, and it's not clear just what it's supposed to do, and why do we need this now? And is this somewhat attached or involved in the fact that the body of water up there, the reservoir, is not working properly because of a faulty cover or something like that? I would like to know some of these things, and I think the public would, too. Is any possibility of getting them?
Well, since it's coming from Big Canyon reservoir, I'm hoping it's water and not sewer.
There's also nothing wrong with the cap, just so folks know. The staff, the item does say Corona Del Mar Water Transmission Main.
Why do we need this 36-inch main, though, that's going down into like a 20-inch main? I mean, what is the, and this is going down MacArthur for a large portion, too. I mean, it's, this isn't a small main. This is very major.
Dave?
As a reminder to Mr. Nichols and to the public, the city has what's called a water master plan that's adopted by the city council. It's updated when it needs to be updated, sometimes as frequently as yearly, but every year, the city council assigns money from, from your rate revenue, the rate revenue that the taxpayers pay, to continuously improve our water system. And we prioritize them based on the age of the main. Remember, we're a 106-year-old city, so some of our mains are, were certainly that old at one point. We, we have a plan in place to replace, to plan in place to replace that, and this is consistent with that plan. It's a 30-inch main going to a 24-inch main, all consistent with the master plan.
All right. Is there any other council discussion here? Does anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item?
I'll bet not very many people understand what the heck you're talking about so far.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Further discussion? Please vote. Okay. Item number 17, Councilmember Daigle?
Yes. One question. I was looking on page three at the items request for additional funds to cover specialty litigation costs. And footnote two indicated that the office of city attorney is prepared and capable of handling this matter in-house if directed to do so, that some could be saved. And I'm wondering, as a cost control measure, if we would want to have it handled in-house or perhaps if there's other considerations, you know, whether quality or whatever, that we would want to send it out house? I'd be kind of interested in what people think.
David, would you like to respond?
I guess Councilmember Daigle was referring to the reference to the Moore versus City of Newport Beach matter that I referred to, and I anticipate, and I identified an amount of money that I anticipated it would cost to handle that case should it actually be filed and pursued. And that's just, that's the matter for the public's sake of what's being discussed.
Okay. Council comment? Councilmember Curry?
I guess I would depend upon the city attorney's advice at the point in time when these cases are brought before us as to whether or not he believes in his professional judgment they should be referred out or should be handled in-house. I think we've got a pretty good track record of dealing with these cases and dealing with them successfully. And while I, as much as anybody else, don't like spending money on them, a part of our fiscal sustainability plan is our vigorous defense against the cases in which the city is sued. And I think we should continue to have that as a major policy issue, and I think we should use whatever legal techniques in professional judgment are the most appropriate for getting the job done.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I support the private sector handle on these. And I guess my underlying concern is if we're sort of doubling up in resources, if we also have a lot of in-house resources that could also handle it.
Okay. I'm confused. You feel that, that we should take it outside? And is that what you were saying, Councilman Curry? I?
No. What I'm saying is I think on each case, I think the city attorney has a recommendation to us as to what the most effective and cost-effective and efficient way of handling these cases are. Sometimes that's going to outside counsel, and sometimes it's handling it in-house.
Okay. Well, that's what I understood you were saying. So I would agree with, with that, that we would depend upon your advice, and when we no longer want your advice, we'll let you know.
Any other council comment on this item?
I'll just say that I appreciate that he's bringing this forward now as opposed to us finding out about it after the money's already been spent, so.
Very good. Do any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Denise Oberman. Good evening, Mayor Council. I reviewed the city agenda and the request for the additional legal budget, and obviously it's important for the council to consider the management of legal expense. I have a question as resident and also taxpayer of the city. Why did the city decide to enter into a 25-year development agreement with a business operator who's repeatedly refused to comply with the local ordinances and who apparently disrespects the community? And now we're in a situation where the city proposes to spend more of the city's money, our money, to defend this business, and in fact, a business that is operating without the appropriate and required state licenses or certifications, which is creating a health and safety hazard to our clients. So why didn't the city simply compel this operator to go through the city's crafted administrative process that many of the other businesses of this nature did and apply and be reviewed for a use permit? So thank you very much.
Mr. Hunt, would you care to respond to that?
She, that's a very complex issue that was addressed in the context of the Morningside Development Agreement. We had multiple public hearings on, and it's really not the subject of this matter. And I think what's going on is it's taking it beyond the agenda scope. The bottom line is, is the council considered all of the viability and issues related to the Morningside Development Agreement in multiple public hearings and decided to adopt that development agreement appropriately. As part of that development agreement, there's an obligation to jointly defend the development agreement because the council made the determination that it brings value to the city that is worth defending. And that's what this agenda item addresses, that simply the cost of defense of that matter should it be filed and prosecuted.
And I think that your main issue is that we are obligated under the agreement.
Correct.
To defend it. So, okay. Do we have other public comment on this item?
First of all, this item is about group homes. I just thought that maybe somebody might know that or want to know about it. This is Dick Nichols in Corona Del Mar. We have on the city rules that you're supposed to have a license to operate in, with these homes. Now, we're supposedly giving a 20-year grant to the guy, and he doesn't have a license. This seems like he should just simply be shut down. If he doesn't have an ADP license, he shouldn't be operating his group home.
Mr. Nichols, this, this item is really about a budget amendment. And so did you have a question or a concern regarding the budget amendment here?
The budget amendment is supposedly to defend the actions taken by the city council when they granted this fellow a, a right to have this group home for 25 years, whether he obeys the law or not, apparently. And that seems And that seems to me be totally out of line. We have a way of, of handling this where you require the people to pass the state law and the city law. City law says that we do not have integral homes in residential. The, the state law in general says that, that basically you have to have a license to be a group home, and, and we are not requiring that. And that license can be issued to seven and under. So basically, if it were in residential, it's supposed to be a less than, less than six. So, I mean, it seems to me that if we just enforce the rules on our, on our pad that we already have, we can simplify this, because unless they meet those, they shouldn't be allowed to be going any further. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other comment on this item?
My name is Jim Mosher. My comment is, I just, I could not understand the staff report. I've tried many times to read it. It says that it's a request for two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand nine hundred dollars to keep the city attorney's office solvent through the end of the year, but then in section, and that's, that request is, you're being asked to approve. But in section two, it describes in another, it says additional four-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, and I cannot understand if the two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand nine hundred is sufficient to cover the entire costs for the year, or this is the first installment, and there's going to be a second installment of four-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-eighty, yes, four-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, thank you.
Do you have a clarification of that, David?
The two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand is to cover the budget for the balance of the year. What I was forecasting there is what the overall cost would be, and the other resources that currently exist in the office and available to us will be used to cover the balance.
So there's, there's funding availability in other accounts that would offset the, so the, the net increase is two-hundred-and-sixty-two?
The net increase needs to be the two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand.
All right, and any other comments on this item?
Good evening, Lori Morris, West Newport. I think Mr. Nichols' question is valid. He's asking, this amount of money that has been spent, or is going to be spent, or could possibly be spent, if there's a clarification, if, if what you're saying is, he shouldn't be asking these questions, if you could clarify, then what is the money's for? Is it to defend against other operators, or is it to defend against Morningside? Is it to, I'm not sure exactly what, what the request is for, if, if you're not, in fact, joining with Morningside to fight residents who do not want Morningside, who is an egregious operator, has proven to be an egregious operator, who has followed no codes, no laws, no city laws at all, no state laws at this point. They, they don't even have a license to operate, to treat. So if there could be a clarification as to what actually this, this money is requested for.
David?
This money is requested for the purposes of covering the out-of-pocket expenses the city will incur in multiple pieces of litigation for the balance of the year. It highlights where the money's been spent to date, and what I anticipate will be spent for the balance of the six months. Part, a portion, and probably a small portion of that, would be utilized should we be sued by Moore in order to defend that matter, depending on when it's filed and pursued, if we believe and recommend to the council we use outside counsel, or if we use internal resources. I wanted the council to see what our anticipated expense would be for the balance of year, of the year. This agenda item is not about Moore, this agenda item is not specifically about group homes, it's about the expense of handling outside counsel, and the need to augment our budget to cover those expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll move the item. Okay. Any further discussion? Please vote. Okay, item number eighteen, Mr. Mosher.
For the benefit of the audience, item eighteen is entitled to review of the functions and performance of the city attorney's office. Did I say my name is Jim Mosher? I find the appearance of this item on the consent calendar peculiar, since it was originally scheduled to be presented as an item of regular business at the October twelfth, two thousand and ten meeting, but was voted there to be continued to November ninth, and yet on that date did not appear on the list of continued business. Be that as it may, it is a subject I've been wishing to speak about since first seeing it on the agenda last year. Despite the glowing report that you're receiving and filing, I feel the city's attorney's office is badly in need of improving its interface with the public. As an illustration, I see that among the goals that are listed here is one to avoid making seat-of-the-pants decisions. From my personal experience, when any, any other part of the city makes such a decision, the city attorney's office sees its role as being one of searching for a catch-22 buried somewhere in the labyrinth of conflicting codes that could be used to justify that decision, regardless of its merits. That may be desirable when defending the city against outside lawsuits, but it is hardly a quality the council should want in dealing with our own citizens. Likewise, I see the city attorney's office says it has a goal of not being naysayers. I find that phrase painfully ironic in view of my own experience with the totally unnecessary T-Mobile cell site project that is being promoted by city staff for construction in front-of-my-view windows. Since the city, the city attorney's office injected itself into the discussion in September two thousand and nine, their role has consistently been to deny the existence of each and every right afforded to the citizens in such matters under the council's policies and ordinances. They have even attempted to impede access to both public records and to public employees, something particularly shameful in a gold-standard city. Their attitude seems to be that if we're not happy with their decision that two plus two equals five, we should hire an attorney and take the city to court. I don't think that should be necessary, and I don't think that's an attitude that is in the best interest of the city financially or otherwise. I suggest the council instruct the city's attorney office to add to its goal one of being more proactive in looking for ways in which the city's charter, codes, and policies can be used for the maximum benefit of the citizens, not just to justify staff actions after the fact. I was also surprised to discover in reading the staff report that the review of the codes and policies of the city is a relatively minor and perhaps a new function that's tucked under heading number two. I would have thought that assisting the city manager in putting the city's legal house in order would have been a major goal and a top priority. I urge the council to scrutinize this office and its goals more carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have a comment on this item? Bring it back to council, is there any further comment? Councilmember Selig moved the action. Second, Councilmember Rosansky, any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Rosansky.
Were you intending to vote, Councilmember Rosansky?
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and item number twenty, Councilmember?
Going to take this one?
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, at the study session, you talked about maybe some additional language that might talk about reporting. I just took a try at that one. And actually, this takes a little different tack, because Councilmember Daigle talked to me at the break and said, what about this? So, the city manager, this would go on, for those following, it's item twenty, and it's page, it's printed page twelve and chicken scratch page seventeen. A new section C to part five, reporting at least once in eleven and twelve, the city manager shall report to the council a summary of all contracts entered into by the city manager and department directors. So this is below the council level, obviously. The summary shall include the vendor, the department responsible to oversee the contract, the purpose of the contract, and the contract amount. That would be the suggestion.
Okay.
This is a change from quarterly in one year, so it's really up to you. We will report what you desire.
So, the change on the table is to go to two annual reports, as opposed to one year's worth of quarterly reports?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll move the items amended. Okay. Second. All right, does the public wish to comment on this item?
My name is Jim Mosher. As I began to explain at the study session, the proposed policies use the words "award" and "sign" as an apparent shorthand for approving and executing a contract. Putting these powers in a single individual invites abuse, and no matter what safeguards the city attorney and the city manager say the new policy contains, the electorate has, through the city charter, imposed its own safeguard by limiting the responsibility for approval of these contracts to the council, the city manager, and no one else. The present policies have already illegally extended the approval authority beyond that sphere, and these proposals extend it still further, using the creative concept of delegating authority through the city manager to his subordinates, and even to the city attorney who does not report to him. There is no basis for any of this in the city charter. Delegating contract authority, approval authority, to the city attorney seems particularly inappropriate, since the charter assigns to him the responsibility to verify the legal correctness of contracts. Even if it was not prohibited by the charter, placing the authority to approve, check, and sign all in the same person does not seem wise. I can appreciate that the council and the city manager find the responsibility to review and approve every contract burdensome, but it is in the job description, and if you don't like the job description, you should either not have taken the job, or you should ask the voters to change it. If you do choose to adopt the policies before you, I would suggest you add language to define exactly who the authorized department directors are, perhaps by reference to Municipal Code Chapter two-twelve, in which the current departments are defined. I don't think you will find the department directors in Chapter two-twelve to be the persons you think they are. Second, I don't see the significance of imposing dollar limits if they can be automatically increased without further council intervention, as is done under section three B of the proposed policy F fourteen. Third, I would recommend that you consider whether there is a Brown Act problem with Article three of that section whereby still larger cost-overrun amendments appear to require council consent, but the consent can be granted without any documentation by a claimed polling of the council members individually and resulting, not approval, but absence of action. From what little I've read, the California Attorney General regards such polling of council members as a serial meeting. Fourth, I applaud provision five A in the proposed policy F fourteen, under which all original service contracts will be retained by the city clerk. Oddly, that proposal does not extend to the contracts under policy F five. For a brief time in the nineteen-sixties, the clerk saw fit to attach to each signed contract a cover sheet detailing exactly who approved it and when, the process of approval being different than the process of signing. That sounds to me like would be a very good addition to the current policies. Finally, I don't know if the council has before them the same documents that were distributed to the public outside, but I would suggest you ask the staff to correct the many typos that occur at the end of both of the draft policies, including the humorously erroneous dates, which you will find at the end of them, and what seems to be intended as a section six about future amendments at the end of policy F fourteen. Thank you.
Okay, I'm presuming that these typos were intended to have been corrected.
That was why I suggested you pull it, especially the one that says twenty-twenty-five is the date that this was enacted.
Okay, and we're moving in that direction, but. And, Mr. City Attorney, there was a, there was a concern raised about a Brown Act, potential Brown Act violation here, I presume that you've considered those issues?
There's no issue with respect to the Brown Act. What that provision states is, is that it's a notification provision, that's all it is. It's not polling the council in spite of what Mr. Mosher has said, it's a notification, and then if any council member wishes to have this issue, an issue brought to them regarding an emergency contract, that one council member can take that action. That is not a wheeled meeting, that is not a violation of the Brown Act in any way, it's simply a polling provision.
Okay.
Also, there was, do we, are we comfortable with the way we've defined director, department director? Is there any, he brought that up.
I believe we're, we're consistent with, department director is clear within the organization. We have to update our sections on what department directors are under our municipal code, because we're currently going through a reorganization. We're comfortable, I think we're comfortable in this, this is written in order to meet the needs of our organization on the long term, so I believe it's adequate.
And then there was a suggestion of a conflict between policy F five and who maintains the contracts? The city clerk and?
I'm not familiar with any conflict between F five and F fourteen and the city clerk's obligations.
Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Do any council members wish to comment? Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Oh, yes, we did, right.
Okay, all right, then please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I think we're done with the consent calendar.
Much better than the last meeting. Well done, Mayor.
I recognize I need to earn the respect of my council members here. So, I think we're on to oral reports on city council activities. And Councilmember Hill, did you have any reports?
No reports.
Councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
None.
Councilmember Daigle? And Councilmember Curry?
No report.
And Councilmember Selig?
I have none this evening.
And I have none. And so we're on to current business.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this next item is a consideration of telecommunications facility permit by, sponsored by Mesa Consolidated Water District, and is proposed for Ridge Line Drive, which is near the San Joaquin Hills reservoir. So, Jim Campbell is here for a brief presentation, should you choose it, and I believe Aaron Stephan is here as well.
Is it a brief presentation? Yes, it could be very brief.
Then make your brief presentation, please.
This is a, as the city manager indicated, this is a telecommunications permit request by IRWD. Oh, I'm sorry, Mesa Consolidated, on IRWD's land at San Joaquin Reservoir. It's basically to help them automate and run their water transmission lines, so it requires this permit approval. We do feel all the findings can be made in accordance with municipal code, and staff is recommending approval. I can also show you pictures that were a mock of the proposed installation, it's barely visible.
Does anyone care to see pictures? Okay, I think we have pictures in the staff report anyway, so.
Mr. Mayor, we have pictures in our.
Okay.
I'm done.
That's, that's a good report, Mr. Campbell. Move the item. All right, movement? And a second, any council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, it appears clear from the map that I live outside of the five-hundred-foot line from this spot, but I can see it from there, so I will be abstaining.
Okay. All right, did you have a comment?
Just to move the item.
All right, and then do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to council, let's vote.
With Councilmember Curry abstaining, the motion carries.
Okay, with regard to the next agenda item, it would ordinarily be item number twenty-two on the Lido Village Conceptual Plan. I thought it might be better to go ahead and cover the ordinance having to do with waste collection and penalties for violations of that, which is item number twenty-three. Does anyone object that we consider item twenty-three now instead of item twenty-two? Then let's do item twenty-three.
Mayor Hen and councilmembers, good evening. My name is Rob Morton, I'm a lieutenant with the Newport Beach Police Department. I'm also losing my voice here to a cold. I want to begin by thanking Deputy City Attorney. I want to begin by thanking Deputy City Attorney Kyle Rowan for drafting the ordinance that is before you tonight. We work a lot with Kyle and the entire staff at the city attorney's office, and he does a great job, so I want to acknowledge him for his efforts. And I also want to thank Operations Director Mark Harmon for his input as well. I work very closely with both of them. I appreciate it very much. Let's face it, unless your name is Oscar and you live in a trash can on Sesame Street, you're not going to really care about your trash too much. That all changes, however, when you see somebody rifling through your trash container or you see the aftermath of that. And for some people, it really provokes a visceral reaction in them, and they don't like it, and they want something done about it. And that's why we have literally received hundreds of complaints over the years regarding scavengers, trash pickers, recyclers, whatever name that you have for them. But it is a hot-button topic, and I know that from the Neighborhood Watch meetings that I go to. Sometimes it'll actually dominate the conversation. So what attracts these scavengers to our city? Well, certainly, the economy drives it. They also like the sheer abundance of the recyclables in a beach community. We've actually had them tell that. They like the concentrated nature of Newport Beach, especially on the peninsula. They like the alleys. It gives them a sense of anonymity, and it gives them access to the trash containers. And they like the housing density. The trash containers are literally right next to each other. It's kind of a work smarter, you know, not harder concept for these folks. And why are the residents and the business owners so upset? Well, a lot of these people will trespass on their private property. They will literally overturn their trash containers, leaving the refuse on the ground to be cleaned up by the owner or the city personnel that go out there. Some of these people will commit opportunistic thefts, thefts of bicycles, for example, out of a garage. And some of them will even commit identity theft from some of the material that they find in these trash containers, or they will sell that information to somebody who does. And finally, a lot of people get upset. These people take revenue away from the city that would normally be used to offset refuse collection costs. And then there may be some people here in the audience tonight that might have other reasons as well. One of the biggest concerns that we see is the growing trend of these commercial operators, is what I call them. And what these folks do is they hire others to scavenge for them. The operator will pay them a fee, and they keep the profit, and they literally never get their hands dirty. In our current municipal code, when we looked at it, it does not adequately address these types of operators. It's more focused on the people who actually put their hands into the containers and take stuff out. What's the police department done over the years? We have had enhanced enforcement efforts. In 2009, we wrote over 100 citations for these violations, and in 2010, we wrote over 120 citations for these violations. And these do not include any citations written by code enforcement. I don't have that data available, but I'm sure that's a pretty good number as well. We believe our efforts have had a positive impact. I'd like to say that, and I'm sure it has, but I just checked the other night for our calls for service the last month, and I found 16 scavenger-related calls. All of them had different reporting parties. All of them had different suspect descriptions, and all of them had different locations. Balboa Island, CDM, Dover Shores, Newport Shores, and the peninsula dominated most of the calls. The current municipal code sections that address these violations have serious limitations. Specifically, these violations can only be currently prosecuted as infractions, which limits our ability to, one, make physical or custodial arrests. It limits our ability to levy greater fines and/or jail time. And, three, it limits our ability to prosecute the commercial operators as principles to these crimes under the aiding and abetting statute in the penal code, which is Penal Code Section 31. The substantive amendment in Section 6.04070 is the addition of the aiding and abetting language. This language is inserted directly to target these commercial operators. And the substantive amendments in Section 6.04240 allow these violations to be prosecuted as misdemeanors, in that violators are subject to administrative citations in addition to or separate from criminal penalties. If approved, we believe these proposed amendments will provide a better deterrent, and we urge the council to pass the ordinance to a second reading and final adoption. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Officer Morton. Do we have any comments or questions from council? Councilmember Rosansky?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. This has been a long time coming. I know I live in Newport Shores, and it is a significant problem there, as well as Councilman Hens' district down the peninsula and other areas of town. Very... It's difficult to catch these people, so when we do catch them, we want to prosecute them as fully as we possibly can. So I'm glad to see the changes, and I'll make a motion that we move to adopt the recommendation.
I'll second that motion. Other council comments? Councilmember Hill?
I, too, would like to thank you for the presentation. I have a commercial office building on the peninsula. I arrive at work early in the morning, and I've had people pop up out of the large trash dumpster that we have, having been scavengers in it, and it scares a living daylight out of me. So, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
As this is enacted, so the resident who sees in the alley someone going through the trash should call the police department, or who should they call? Code enforcement?
They could call either, but we do not mind getting the call. Understand, it's a lower priority call. If there's nothing else more significant, we will go right out. But if there were more significant, higher priority calls, there would be a delay. But we would handle that as well.
It also depends on the time of day, too. If it's during the day when code enforcement staff are regularly on duty, it's always good to call them as well in case we don't get it covered.
All right. I had a couple of comments. First off, it's my understanding that part of the problem in Newport Beach is that other cities have already adopted more stringent ordinances like this that call for tougher and criminal penalties, and therefore Newport Beach has been known as a target of opportunity and at low risk. Is that true?
That is my understanding as well. The designation as the infraction, a lot of these violators literally look at that as a cost of doing business here. And we cannot physically do a custodial arrest of these people. We just have to write them a ticket after a ticket after a ticket, and it's kind of frustrating when there's repeat offenders. If this passes, that will come to an end.
Just as a comment in passing, given that fact, I think it would be incumbent on city staff to make sure that it becomes as widely known as possible that Newport Beach has joined the ranks of cities that are protecting themselves with this kind of an ordinance, just to get the word out. And another good way to get the word out is to make some arrests. So while I appreciate that this is a low priority item, and I understand why that's the case, I would hope and encourage the police department at the outset on the passage of this ordinance to raise the priority of this issue and, by way of announcing our new ordinance, make some arrests. And I think that'll get the word around very fast as well, so I would encourage you to do that as you're thinking about this. I did have one other question. Is it possible now, because of this ordinance, that vehicles can be impounded? For example, these commercial operators, my understanding is they tend to give crews rides into town...
Yes, they do.
And the crews bring back their stuff and throw it in the vehicle, and then they leave. Can we impound vehicles?
If we arrest that commercial operator, absolutely. And a lot of times what we'll find is when we stop somebody related to this violation, they may have a suspended license or some other issue going on, but absolutely, that can be done.
Taking away the wheels will really get the word out, I would think.
Yes, sir.
So encourage you in that respect as well. So absent any other comment on council, can we have...
I just got a quick question.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Do these folks typically do this late at night or during the day, or is it just any time of day or night?
Early in the morning, usually, and in the afternoon, but we've literally seen them out there at all time. But maybe some of the audience members could comment on that, but usually in the morning and in the afternoon is when we'll see them.
Councilmember Gardner?
They seem to know our trash days.
Yeah? Working smart. Okay. Comments from the public? Thank you very much, Officer Morton.
Thank you.
That's a very good presentation. Thank you.
Cindy Kohler, West Newport. I just want to personally thank Chief Johnson and our PD. If it wasn't for you guys, this is going to make a huge difference for us on the peninsula. I live on a corner, and this happens every day, every day. I had an incident this morning, and I will tell you, you responded in about three minutes. I had two units in three minutes. A woman that obviously was on something, going through our trash. We see them coming up and down the sides of our houses. They come to our doors, they come onto our patio. So I just want to say thank you so much to the city for giving the officers the tools to go after this and put a stop to this. I think it will send a message to these people, because there are crews. I have met them. We have one manual who I know the police are aware of, and he tells me, he brings everybody down, and they walk our neighborhood, and he won't touch anything because he's been approached so many times. So he brings new people in. So then we have to call on the new people. So I just... I really want to say thank you, and especially to the officers. They have been wonderful.
Thank you, Cindy.
Dan Purcell, Corona Del Mar. Thanks again for addressing this. It's going to relieve me of a lot of bicycling around through all the alleys in the Corona Del Mar Village, kind of trying to keep an eye on all these people. Thanks a lot.
Lori Morris, West Newport. Yes, I would like to comment on this issue. I do want to thank Chief Johnson, I see here, and all the officers that do respond quickly. I know there is a higher priority of items, and we know that when we call. A lot of these are crews, and they are going to... Four in the morning, I've been woken up loud, stake bed trucks grabbing everything they can, people coming through as spotters. You know the spotters because they're checking for, you know, what other items can be taken as they appear to be just be going through the trash. And I realize that, you know, the economy's bad, people need to, you know, do this sort of thing, and that's the way it's been for a long, long time, but it changed dramatically in the last two or three years. This past year has been great. The officers have been coming out and citing them as best they can, but there was only so much they could do. And with this new tool, they will most definitely, it looks like, be able to get this under control and stop these crimes of opportunity. We've had surfboards, bicycles, patio furniture, anything you mentioned that can be recycled has been stolen. So I just want to say thanks to the officers and to the city for putting this forward, and hope that this will actually do some good. So thank you all.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you. Any other comments at council? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Chief, I'd like to add my personal thanks on that item as well. I can personally attest, it's all hours of the day. Okay. We are now back to the future here, item number 22, having to do with the Lito Village conceptual planning. And before we begin the staff presentation, I think similar to the last time, Jim Campbell will kick it off, and then Tim Collins will give a presentation, and I believe then Dave Kiff will make some comments. We'll have council comment along the way. When we're ready for public comment, I would like any stakeholders who are present to have an opportunity to comment, and then we'll take other comments and then come back to council for consideration. So Jim, with that?
Sure. I'll kick this off. You know, this is really the culmination of a planning effort that really started back in July of 2011 with the council working with the three major stakeholders, the Fritz Duda Company and Lito Marina Village and the city, looking to conceptually plan the area here. We've had several study sessions. We've had several concept plans that have been refined down to maybe the last plan, which was presented at the last meeting. But with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Tim Collins to provide a more in-depth overview, and then on to Tom Martin of WHA to go over the plan.
Good evening, Mayor Hand, members of the council. I also want to say to the public and those who are watching at home that, following tonight's presentation, we will have all of the materials that you have in your package and some more, mostly images that we did not reproduce tonight, and some background information that you all have seen before. But the more we hear from new interest, resident questions, we realize that we need to have a little more comprehensive record. So we'll be loading up to the city's website tomorrow an expanded version of what we're going to go over tonight. This presentation concludes our team's contractual obligation, and this is the last deliverable of our five-month process. We believe that there's still work to be done, but we think that we have accomplished the objectives that were set out. We've followed the guiding principles and happy to come back to you to build on what we left on January the 11th. As to the January 11th study session we had, we received clear direction from the council and a request for some additional information. On this slide here in front of you, just to review briefly, council reached a consensus with regard to the city hall site reuse in seven respects. First, that they liked the beach-to-bay connection. The residential element for city hall was appropriate. That they were comfortable with compensating private property owners for any taking of land or rights for the greater public benefit and the preservation of connections within the village. That would be to keep an economic balance for those property owners. Council was comfortable with some height limit variances, again, to be considered as trade-offs for other public benefits. The Lito Village Center received a lot of discussion, and it will be one of our principal update items this evening, and the programming thereof. The need for a lot-line adjustment between the Lito Partners and the city hall site was acknowledged in order to allow for an expedited recruitment of a new grocery and other retail tenants. And lastly, the need to retain joint use and access on the Finley Avenue entry off of Newport Boulevard. We were asked to come back with some further definition, and some community outreach was acknowledged to be needed in several areas. First, on what types of housing were appropriate to the village. We were asked to quantify some of the cost and revenue generation potential of the various housing types. We were also asked to come back with further analysis and recommendations, and then on an ongoing basis to continue to build consensus. In the consensus building, I might mention, as the mayor mentioned that he attended, we did make a presentation on the project following the study session to speak up Newport to a full house, and that represented the seventh public outreach session where there were more than 40 residents in a public forum. Next slide, please. The sizing of the community village center, as I said, will be one of our main subjects tonight. With the help of staff, we've been able to get empirical data on the current facilities, particularly on the west side of Newport, and what their operational requirements are. We have reviewed such facilities for the potential for merger consolidation. Some of those might be a starter or a non-starter to the council. We've incorporated some of the flexibility to accommodate both historic and cultural activities within the village center. That was a repeat comment at the study session. And we've looked a bit at how the village center might expedite and improve the ability to have special events in the facilities, potential revenue generating opportunities again, for example, to be compatible with theater arts activities at the theater and charity events and so forth, which have taken place historically, particularly by the Duda Company in and around their property. And lastly, we have sought to see how we can have compatibility with the entertainment venue of the historic theater. I want to thank the creative juices again of William Hiz Mohawk Architects. They've been able to bring forward some form and shape and an insight into what the public facility might look like, both its size and its height, and just some contextual data that will help council have some good discussion this evening. On selecting the residential housing types, we've heard that the options would be the age-restricted and retirement type versus the luxury for rent or young professional type of apartments. The recommended segmentation... The recommended segmentation amongst and between those housing types. And we acknowledge that this subject is going to require more study in the specific plan development phase we'll talk about shortly. And lastly, we need to assign land coverage for the various uses, and hopefully the focus tonight on the village center will arrive at a sighting, at a size, at a footprint, such that we will know what is available for residential use on the balance of the property. We mentioned at our study session the sense of urgency having to do with fast-tracking the Lido Partners. You heard from their representatives, and you may hear again this evening, that they are losing their anchor tenant, the grocery tenant, this coming June, and as such, they want to move forward to re-tenant and redevelop the property. Beyond that, we have also heard from two other property owners who are interested in expediting the redevelopment of their properties, and they too would like to know what is a platform for redevelopment that they could participate in that would not be preferential to any one landowner. At this point, I'd like to introduce Todd Lerner from WHA Architects, who will walk you through the selected option again briefly, and then introduce you to the options for the community center. Todd?
Good evening, Mayor Hand, council members and staff. It's amazing that five months ago, we started this process, and we arrived to a consensus plan here. And as Tim had mentioned, we've had many outreach programs and different sessions going on. And our goal for the concept plan was, again, looking at the big picture, looking at all the different components, looking at all the different phasing, all the different issues that would go into this area, listening to owners, to stakeholders, and also working with public staff and working with the Public Works Department just to deliver a concept plan that is feasible. And we really took the input from citizens and different groups to really create a sense of place, or a hook, as one resident said. We used some historic referencing, we used some theme and character, and all these things helped lend to a contextual plan that we developed. Again, as we went through this process, as I mentioned before, we're going through it, looking at it in three dimensions, looking at different opportunities. One of the questions during the last session was clarification about buildings. These two buildings right here are existing. That's why we highlighted them in blue. And the darker shaded area represents areas that are above the 35-foot height limit. The reason why we wanted to stress the 35-foot height limit is that this area was evolved, you know, 30, 50 years ago, and that the commercial component, the retail component then, was much different than it is today. You have vendors and tenants that want to come in and use spaces that have higher ceiling plates, higher volumes, to create an entertainment destination use. So in understanding that height and the verticality, we threw the plan and the model into 3D to help us understand these different places. And with that, we're looking at the building, the massing, looking how people, places are created. But then that also spurred us to our next task, in looking at how the village center really was going to fit into the larger picture and how it could possibly become an anchor. And as a reminder, as we looked closer to the site, and since our last meeting, we really looked at the opportunities of programming. And the function of this next study was to determine how much can we fit within that 13,000 to 15,000 square feet? And is it feasible? Can it work? And through the next few slides here, you'll see how that has come in to play, and also how we can take some of the character envisioning and turn it into a building and a form and function. So to kind of step back a little bit, we're looking at the program elements that were discussed during the last meeting on January 11th. We took some of the comments, we took some out, we added some in. One of them was looking at a city hall annex possibly. But we also looked at creating a destination recreation center or a village center that could benefit the Lido Village, could benefit the Canary Area, West Newport, Babo Peninsula, Newport Island, and also Lido Island. And it wasn't necessarily one-dimensional or one-generational, but multi-generational, and helping everyone come to a place that they could call their own. So there were lots of good arguments put out there. One of them was the sky bridge. Is it good? Is it bad? There was lots of great discussion, and we want to encourage this discussion and encourage this consensus building for the next phases as we go down. So in looking at the site plan and looking at the program elements, we took the approach of doing a two-level plan or layout. And let me back up really quick here. The area that we're going to be looking at in particular right here is the village center that we talked about right here. Current city hall is right here, just to give a little context to everyone in the audience here. So in looking at the two-story model, we really wanted to make sure that the first level served two functions. One, as a greeting area with the lobby. As a concept, we wanted to put the lobby on the corner here, just as a design element coming off of Finley, so you can actually see the entrance of the building as you're coming across the bridge. We also needed to have form and function with a circulation pattern coming in off of Finley. And also, we're providing 30 spaces of public parking right here. Now, depending upon the program uses and depending on what people decide on, that can fluctuate. And right now, we're looking at a deficiency of about 10 spaces that could be picked up off of 32nd Street in the metered parking that's there right now. So there is some component that will be captured onsite and a little bit that's offsite. If you notice at the first floor lobby right here, we really wanted to encourage an area that was open and light that allowed for the lobby to be a greeting center, as well as an opportunity to display arts and local different arts and paintings or photography, and really make it a public space. We also incorporated a public safety component down in here. One of the questions was possibly providing a small area for people to come and see, people to come interact with the public officials. That could be that as well. But also providing a storage facility right along the plaza area that could be used to house equipment for multipurpose events that could happen on the plaza area. Again, we're looking at a functionality diagram here, and the details will be figured out a little bit later. So the second floor of the plan really is where all the function and form takes place. We really want to incorporate continuing the gallery from the first floor up to the second floor and provide a gallery up in here. We also wanted to look at the programming from this component right here, where we would put a director's office right here, plus a support office, that could then secure this area in a public setting or on and off hours. We placed the majority of the functional offices along Newport Boulevard right here to provide kind of a screen or a shield to these meeting rooms that would then be engaged along the open space and the corridor out here to a second-level mezzanine. Now, all of these, the idea behind these was that these walls could be removable, or they could be movable, just like many hotel or conference centers where you have movable walls. And the idea was that you could have expanding or contracting multiple uses going on at the same time. We placed the core elements of a bathroom and kitchen in the center, so it could function to all sections right here. But we also provided stairs coming up from the plaza up to the second-floor area to engage this space right here. We also incorporated a deck component right here that would engage in coming up the stairs that could connect to a potential sky bridge that goes across over the Lido Plaza project itself. Again, we're showing representative images here that show open and light and airy configurations. We really want to encourage the indoor-outdoor lifestyle that Newport Beach has to offer, which is unlike a lot of its sister cities. So this is a conceptual rendering that we prepared based upon the floor plan. And the reason why we took this angle from Finley was to show how the building could be masked and how it could be broken up and articulated to a pedestrian-level scale. We took the approach of not one style but multiple styles, and what we're calling it is Newport Eclectic. Newport Beach and the Lido Village have evolved, and the Peninsula has evolved over the last 100 years. And it has encompassed all sorts of different architectural styles, from Spanish to contemporary to Art Deco. It spans the whole gamut of Newport Beach, which I think makes it great. So in doing so, we paid a little bit of homage to an Art Deco facade along Newport Boulevard that complements the Lido Theater. We also provided a green screen right here that hides the parking that would be below. But then when you come into the first floor, we really wanted to provide a two-story volume of glass right here that provided a mezzanine and natural light coming into the area. And then over here, we did a representative sketch of a lifeguard tower that would be able to take people up with the core of an elevator inside, stairwells up, that could then spill over to a third-floor entertainment venue that could then overlook the ocean and get distant views. That was one of the questions, that could you actually get views? We built a 3D model. We recognize that you could get views if you go up onto the third floor. But then also, we wanted to show the connectivity on the second level here of a pedestrian bridge that would connect to the city here, or to, I'm sorry, to the recreation facility right here. And so the whole idea was that we wanted to promote this indoor-outdoor lifestyle. And this is a concept sketch here, and obviously it can evolve through more input. So right now, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Kiff to go into comparisons between the different analogues of community facilities that we looked at as part of our charge in moving forward.
So now we're going to step back a little bit and get into some of the conversation that you folks had with the public last time about if we had a community facility there, what would it look like? And how might its relationship be with other community facilities there? So tonight, I think, I urge you to kind of take that 30,000-foot look at it rather than really honing into the details and maybe give us some early guidance about that. And then February, March would be the time, maybe, where we'd have a broader, more robust discussion about these programs, including should some of the programs at the West Newport Center be brought over here to a Lido Village Center? Should some of the programming at the Marina Park Center also come over as well? And how does that relate to the West Newport site? Do we lease it for housing potentially? And then we would come back to you with some refinements and more detail. So I'm not sure how many folks are familiar with our facilities. And I put Newport Coast Community Center up there because, among other reasons, Councilmember Rosansky identified it. I think it really, it's our newest facility besides Oasis. It's a really wonderful place, if you haven't been out there. And it's become one of our most well-used recreation sites. And I'll talk about some of the programs that are there. And then you compare that with the West Newport Center, which is over on 15th Street. You can see the size is different. Both of these facilities have a critical element to at least the recreation staff and to me, and that is a full-size gym. And it's the most popular thing in both places with our, you folks may know, we have among the most active adult sports league for basketball and volleyball in the entire county. It also, Newport Coast has two classrooms that are split, can be split into four stage. And I won't go through the whole chart, but you kind of get a picture of what's around.
Dave, does that include, do we take into consideration rentals? I know that most places get rented occasionally.
Newport Coast does. This is...
Or is that just our cost without any?
This is just our cost, and I have mixed up a few numbers here in the next charts.
Okay.
So this line just would profile our own costs without at least Newport Coast's side taking in effect revenues. This is, if you haven't been out to the West Newport Community Center, again, this is the, it's not a really nice-looking place from outside, but this is the big asset here. It's the full-size gym. You can see we don't do a lot there, but, sorry, we don't do a lot else besides basketball and volleyball. We have a small after-school kids program, and then classroom rentals that just don't happen much because it's not a real attractive place to be. On the opposite side of that spectrum, and the opposite side of the city, is the Newport Coast Community Center. You can see how many programs we do there, all real popular ones. This is one of the four, two classrooms. You could split it down the middle, kind of as Todd was mentioning. But it's really become the place to be in terms of our recreation programs, just because it's so, it's such an attractive facility. And then, just as a reminder, the Marina Park Community Center, and this is obviously planned. For those who are curious, it's before the Coastal Commission right now. This is the first floor of the community center wing. This is the second floor. Those folks who are familiar with the plan will know that there's a sailing center over on this side. But second floor, big multipurpose room divisible into two classrooms. This is a large room here down below, divisible into three classrooms. And again, that's at the site, roughly at 16th Street. So if you were to ask staff what we would recommend here, it would be something along the lines of a 15,000-square-foot Newport Coast-like facility. If the gym is included, it would allow us to close the West Newport Center and move some of those programmings to Lido Village. Of course, you are moving, you know, the big gym. It would be a big element of this programming. The programs would be determined later, but complimentary to the Marina Park Community Building. We're recommending a deferral, obviously, of those specific programming discussions for that. But when we calculated out the cost after revenue and cost, would be about $200,000, we think, at the high end. Because remember, this would be a staffed facility. The Little West Newport facility isn't staffed. It's key-only, and instructors have their keys and open it up that way. This would be mirroring the staffing situation that we have at Newport Coast. It includes some small operational savings associated with closing that center in West Newport. The numbers are better if the Marina Park facility is not fully staffed, and if we're able to get some income potential off the West Newport Center.
Is there duplication, do you feel, with Marina Park and this proposed center in terms of the kinds of facilities, I mean, the classrooms and that sort of thing? Or would, if the gym is moved, would that sort of balance it out?
I think that would help balance it out, but as Todd's design shows, it's a wonderful design. You do have certainly now a certain amount of classrooms that have a certain amount of programming that you can put into it that inevitably you're going to be competing with the center, our own center just down the road. So yes, there's some duplication there. The real need for us in this part of town is that full-size gym. So whether that stays up at West Newport or comes down this way.
What are your future needs, oh, I'm sorry?
Good, sorry.
What are your future needs with your lifeguard facility? I mean, we just had a storm, there's a lot of flooding. I mean, is there any other opportunities where that could be cited without too much trouble?
Appreciate your bringing that up. Actually, yeah, we did have, the waves came a little bit close to that facility and a lot more close to the vehicles than I would have liked. And I think it is potentially time to rethink rebuilding a lifeguard headquarters there. Arguably, the Marina Park community area might be a good place to house some of our full-time lifeguards. You could use the training rooms for community rooms as well, because they're not always in their training, obviously. That might be a good use. Again, we're just kind of thinking at the 30,000-foot level.
Okay, so potentially, could that, the lifeguard, those uses be dropped into the Marina Park site and structure without any changes to our Coastal Commission approvals?
It's my understanding this is still a consistent coastal use, yes.
Thank you.
Dave, if you tried to put a gym in this building, it'd have to be up on the second floor. Is that going to be able to be contained within the height limits shown in these drawings?
Probably with the, pardon me?
It would probably be a little bit above.
How much is a little bit, do you think?
Five, 10 feet.
Five, 10 feet. Remember, there are a couple of kinds of gyms. You can have a non-regulation gym and cut the ceiling a little bit. If you want a full-regulation gym for especially volleyball, it's the taller ceiling, which is the one at West Newport and Newport Coast. So next, without going too far, this is kind of when I'm going to ask you to continue a dialogue and maybe give us some direction. Because there are certainly other options. I'm going to go back to this slide. You have the smaller center, and Todd's numbers are a little higher square footage, but it's centered around meeting space. That's certainly an option. And actually, if you were to ask the rec folks, they'd say, well, make it an even little bit bigger at 20,000, and you could have a real robust meeting space and a multipurpose room, potentially for local rentals, et cetera. That, of course, increases the parking challenge at the site. And we are recognizing the number of housing units that the site could accommodate is impacted by this decision. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to you folks to kind of maybe invite the public's comment, as well as, and then we'll walk you through some of the decision points that we think we'd like to get direction on.
Okay, well, what I would like to do is see if there are any more council comments or questions, and then hear from the stakeholders and the public. So, council?
I just had, in looking at the staff report, on number six, I don't remember that we actually came to an agreement about the retail. I think there was some hesitation on the part of, I know, a couple of people. So I would quarrel with that, that that was something we had agreed on, and it's something I think that I would like to have further discussion on at some point this evening.
Okay.
And also, I don't know, again, how detailed we want to get. And also, I don't know, again, how detailed we want to get, but a concern I have, I've gotten a lot of, we've had some really thoughtful public communication on this. I really thank everybody who's taken time. Some long letters, but very, very full of great ideas. And they've really made me look at things. I just love the whole idea of the canal, but they've really raised some good issues with that. So, at some point, I think that's something we need to discuss in a lot more detail, whether we should even have that as part of it as well.
Okay, Councilman Daigle?
Yes, kind of a lot of information. I'm not quite sure, you know, what we're going to be considering, but I did have a question more in the retail. What caught my attention in one of the reports is this idea that the city would somehow restrict our future uses and not allow retail. Is that what we're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then, that issue, and then also, just to clarify, when we talk about select housing type, that that would then go into study mode. There's no commitment at this stage as to housing type?
You know, any more, Councilman Hill?
I do have several comments.
Okay.
I think that, staying on the topic of the Village Center for a moment, I think that there is a significant opportunity. I'll go back to the, and try to stay at the high level once again, but every square footage that you, every square foot that you build as a community center, you're in essence taking away from the profitability of the site, from a financial versus community service aspect. And I think that in the fiduciary responsibility that we have, the need to maximize our revenue from this site. Having said that, I still feel that there's very good opportunity for a community center. And if we could achieve that community center without any capital cost, or nearly without any capital cost, then that, to me, would be kind of an ideal solution. If, if we could achieve it without capital cost and have an income stream that paid for the operations of it, so it was completely revenue-neutral, then that would be absolutely perfect. I think that that, in fact, is a possibility. And the way that I would structure that kind of a deal is I would design that facility so that it had the gym in it. I think that if we're, and I'm going to jump to one of your other questions, I was the champion for assisted living. I was wrong. Remember, I'm never in doubt, but often wrong. And, and I do believe that active individuals in the, in the living environment is, is very appropriate. And I think a gym would be very compatible with that kind of activity. I think the gym would draw people into this site, which would feed the retail as well. And so, I think it is, has a synergistic kind of, of marketing opportunity. If we closed the 15th Street, that property can be leased, and that's the appropriate place for assisted living or something of that sort, that has the financial ability to pay a significant revenue stream. That revenue stream can then be pledged into COPs, which would probably come very close to funding the capital cost of building the center. We're not going to develop housing as a city. We're going to long-term lease the land to a developer to build housing. And, and part of our lease negotiations, if you will, for details not to get into today, but benefits that we could add to that project and value, that we should be able to get a bonus, if you will, on the lease, over and above a normal market, that would pay for the operational cost of that facility on a regular basis. So, I think that, that by looking at this in a more global sense, that we can achieve a community activity here and do it revenue-neutral to the city and still receive value from the property. On the property itself, I think there are some things that, and I think it's beyond debate now, that Findlay Avenue would remain a joint use, that we simply should not give that up. I think that, as I interpreted Council Gardener's last comment, I'm, I think the idea of the canal and connecting the harbors is just a terribly exciting thing, but would also be very impractical and very costly. And it could be very costly to maintain as well. I think it would be a high installation cost and a very high maintenance cost. And so, I think that, that however, the utilization of that space as a continuing people's space would be very important. I see no logic whatsoever in the sky bridge. I think it takes people away from the retail environment where we want them to be, part of the synergy. And I don't think it offers vistas of the bay or the ocean, because there are rooftops in the way. It would offer a tremendous vista of the parking lot, and I'm not too impressed with that. However, I do believe the path that that sky bridge takes should be the path of the people path that would take you from 32nd Street up along the west side of the market, between the market and the theater, to Via Lido, then jogging over to access the harbor in the general area that's, that's established in that. My final comment for this first 10 minutes is the loading area of the market as it is planned. I think that that's an appropriate place for the loading area, but not an appropriate aesthetic for it. And that I think that that would have to be fully screened with an articulated wall along that east side, so that the environment across the street of the potential housing and other activities would have a very pleasant aesthetic that they were dealing with. It might even be as such that the market could be shifted to where there might be a depth, where there could be some neighborhood convenient retail along that backside that would offer some, some excitement to that street front as well, so that when we redevelop this area, that, that all environments are exciting.
Okay, thank you. I want to open to public comment, but before I do, we've received a number of communications and emails from folks who are saying, "Don't move too fast, you're rushing to judgment, we can't land on an answer here tonight, we need to take more time." I completely agree with all those comments. And what I want to make sure that all of us understand is that whatever is decided tonight is, in fact, a concept decision. It is subject to actual, specific planning and regulatory actions that give life to that concept. And in the process of considering those regulatory actions and plans, we may well find out that something that was in our concept doesn't work anymore, or that there's a newer, better idea to substitute in, in place of something that was in the concept to start. So, by no means will we be done tonight, whatever we decide with this project, in terms of planning, public input, and consideration of new ideas and changes. And in particular, Dave mentioned that, you know, we have, we need to have a look at our institutional facilities network on the west side of Newport Beach. I totally agree with that. A comprehensive view of our existing facilities and how those facilities could be repositioned over time could have a dramatic impact on what goes on, on the City Hall property. And most certainly will inform us as to what's the right programming for that City Hall property, particularly the Village Center. And we really need to see that comprehensive view before we finalize that decision. And along the way, we want to get plenty of input from the public about that. So, I cannot emphasize enough, this isn't, we aren't done tonight. This is basically planting a flag for the major elements that will be on the City Hall site, subject to a lot more study, refinement, public input. So, please have confidence in that. There will be lots more opportunity for us to get it right. I know getting it right, if there's 100 people in this room, we'll have 100 views of what getting it right means. But we will find enough consensus over time that we'll all agree, looking back at it, well, I didn't get exactly everything I wanted, but we got it right. That's what we want to do. So, with that as a preface, let me invite the, any stakeholders that are here to make any comments, and then I'd be happy to get comment from all of the public that wishes to make it. So, I see Don Howard from the Duda Company.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Han. Good evening, and fellow council members, members of the staff and members of our audience. My name is Don Howard, 3425 Via Lido, Newport Beach. I'm here representing the ownership of Via Lido Plaza. My remarks will be very brief, as we submitted a pretty extensive letter this week to council outlining our support of the Scheme 5B that was shown this evening. We want to thank again the council for commissioning this study, this very important study of Lido Village. We also appreciate the great efforts by TC Collins and Associates and WHA Associates in delivering a very comprehensive and, we think, viable concept master plan, which was achieved, as we mentioned before, through this collaborative effort of the public-private input. We encourage you to adopt this plan this evening, to approve it, with two exceptions from our part. We request the removal of the sky bridge along the comments made by Councilman Hill in terms of its financial feasibility and the effort, being retail developers, to want to put the boots on the ground for customers to interface with our retail tenants at ground level rather than sky level. As important, we'd, we'd like to open up the discussion and recommend to you to further discover the opportunities for access on Findlay Avenue. Maybe the time is right, after all these years, to consider splitting and devoting entrance for the retail sector of our joint properties from the public facility sector. There's some merit to that. We understand your feeling about the dual access, but we would appreciate just having an open-minded approach as you study the land uses that occur on the City Hall property. We make no attempt to jump over our boundary line and try and design the City Hall property at all, but over the years, we've all used that entrance. And there is some concern about traffic circulation, access, and safety, on the one hand, going to the retail side, and on the other hand, going to the embellished public facilities that will occur here through the redevelopment. So, we just request consideration for that. Lastly, one of the recommendations which we, which we strongly support is a parking management study to follow the concept study. Part of that is to look at the party boat permitting process. We encourage that as part of that parking management study and to really take a close look at connecting the permits with parking availability that's required for the operators, that it be in close proximity sufficient and not a burden on adjacent property as it is now. One comment about the Via Porto delivery access, we obviously recommend the Scheme 5B approach to that. I think we can address concerns that were raised by Councilman Hill about appropriate screening for the adjacent properties. And our whole approach through the design processes here has been to be good neighbors. We intend to continue that. We are submitting some additional letters of support here this evening, which I'll give from both tenants and residents and community members. And we're here to address any questions that the council may have of us. Thank you once again for commissioning this study.
Thank you, Don. Don, I got a question? I'm looking at the, at the concept plan, and it appears that you're expanding the footprint of, of the market and the other, and the other retail uses there. It just doesn't look like you have enough parking there. Do you have the same number of parking spaces you have now, or?
We actually, we would actually have more.
This is more than you have now in this layout?
At this, at this concept level-
Are there some on the rooftop?
As, yes, as pointed out by Tim Collins, that would be, we'd call a bubble plan, which would be the area in which the buildings, the building footprints would be located. We now have to come back after this plan is approved with a site-specific building placement, actually defining the footprint of the buildings for the anchor tenants and in that whole area that shows on the, on the bubble plan. That would be the processing of our entitlements, which we hope to do pretty rapidly, once the lot line adjustments achieve.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Other members of the public that would like to, are there any other stakeholders here? I don't see Marshall Prop, oh, they are. Care to make any comments? Okay. And Vornado isn't here. So, any members of the public, be glad to accept comment?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Hugh Helm. I'm a resident of Lido Island, a past president of the association board there, and I have been recently asked by that association to act as its liaison to this project. Mayor Han has very graciously agreed to include me in the ongoing work in that role. I'd just like to make a few comments about the project tonight. First of all, Mayor Han, thank you so very much for your preparatory assurances. I came here tonight to beg you to slow and take some time to do the job right. You said the right things, and we really appreciate that, and it's really important to our people in the community. We appreciate the constraints of time relating to the Via Lido Plaza property, hence, we would encourage you to do what's necessary to work out that lot line adjustment with them, so they can proceed with their planning. I would briefly reiterate a point that I made at the study session, as I believe it should be a fundamental underlying premise as we go forward. The project is an effort to revitalize a deteriorating zone and to do this so that it will be successful in the future. Because the local resident base alone does not have sufficient economic horsepower to make this work, I believe as a premise that we must design this as a destination point, where dollars from tourists and other local residents will provide the additional funding needed to sustain the project. As to the overall plan, we would join Councilman Hill and urge that the canal and sidewalk, or skywalk be eliminated. The skywalk simply takes people away from the project rather than putting them in the project area, and the canal itself would have very unpredictable environmental results. Both would be expensive and that money can be used somewhere else. On the other hand, we believe the winding greenbelt would be an attractive feature. Turning to the city site, I would reaffirm Lido's support for the recommendations in a letter to, of today's date to council members from the president of the Central Newport Community Association. We believe the question of whether there should be a residential component still ought to be on the table, but if there is to be a residential component, it appears to us that affordable housing would be inconsistent with the concept of revitalizing the area and would not provide meaningful economic support. If there is to be a residential component, our Lido residents would, I believe, be supportive of market-rate housing, housing that would in turn provide ongoing economic support for the project. We have heard some discussion of a high-rise there, and from our perspective at this point in time, we would reserve and object to that until we have the time for further study. Tonight, we heard for the first time a lot of detail about the potential uses of a community center, and as it's now referred to as a Village Center. There again, we would like to have time for further study. I appreciate your taking the time to listen to me tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Hugh. Any questions? Good evening, Louise.
Good evening. My name is Louise Funenburg. I am president of Central Newport Beach Community Association. And we have sent in a previous remarks for the study session, and we would just like to follow up with a few here. I thank you, Mayor Han, for saying you would like to go a bit slow, that it's not all going to be done tomorrow night.
Well, I didn't say slow, Louise. I'm in a hurry, but we're going to take enough time.
Well, slow enough that we can all catch up, then. But we would like to give the following recommendations. The council should delay a decision on reuse of the City Hall site until additional outreach to the community is accomplished and other alternatives have been considered. The ultimate use of the site must support the substantially, sustainably, and success of adjacent residential-serving businesses, as well as the needs of the overall peninsula community. If necessary, move forward with a lot line adjustment with the following provisions. Retain access easement from Findlay along with other access rights needed to preserve access to the City Hall site from Newport Boulevard. Do not commit to development restrictions on City Hall site, EI, no retail development, so as not to limit the value and utility of the property.
We've operated the theater for the last 10 of its 72 years in existence. You know, the theater's really one of the last single screens in California and it really withstood the test of time because it really just provides a great communal experience. The theater, I think, is really a beacon in this community and as a theater operator, we would welcome any, any enhancements to the communal experience that the Lido Theater provides. And, you know, we hope to see it go another 72 years and we would encourage approval of anything to, you know, redevelop and enhance the center over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Craig Badley. I'm a resident of Newport Beach here on the peninsula, Mayor Hen, council members. I really appreciate your remarks, Mr. Mayor, about slowing the process down, the process down a little bit. I congratulate the city on this whole visiting process. It's been fantastic. Collins and Associates have done a great job and we've had seven public meetings and approximately maybe 500 people attend those as an aggregate. We have a city of 80,000 people approximately and I think there's a lot more people that need to understand this project before we move too fa, move forward too fast. Many times, people don't really realize what's happening until it's either bulldozer on the site and/or they read about the project that's been approved by planning commission in the papers and they, they maybe come down to the city council at a time like this and maybe they don't. They don't really have a chance to catch up on anything. So I think this is a major, major project that needs to, to have a lot of attention, which the city's been doing a great job so far. Central Newport, Lido Association and West Newport Beach Associations, which I'm a member of, the West Newport Beach Association have met and we all agree on this, this concept which you heard tonight. This is a once-in-a-lifetime project to create a destination resort atmosphere that has, that can be patronized by both the surrounding residents and visitors to our community. We only have one chance to get it right. To be successful, many feel this project needs to, needs to be an attraction to the whole city, next to Fashion Island, make it a place to congregate, shop and dine. I have a few questions for the council. I'm still a little confused what the Lido Village concept plan is about and if it's approved tonight, what's that mean? I've attended a lot of these meetings and I still don't know exactly what that means. If the council votes in favor of this project tonight, does this concept plan become a blueprint for development? Can this plan be changed? If so, how? Is anything in this concept plan not changeable if it's approved tonight? How does this, how does the concept plan define the community, now village center as opposed to a community center? Who's going to manage it? Is it the city? Is it going to be contracted with a private operator? Is it going to be free? It's going to be a profit center? Is it going to be available for institutional counseling use? Will the housing component include senior housing? Is senior housing a compatible use for a vibrant retail dining and high-end residential use? I think we've heard maybe, maybe not tonight. Will, will there be affordable housing or assisted living housing? I think the comments by Councilman Hill tonight maybe suggest it might be a better location for that. These are questions that come up. Short of approving a lot line adjustment tonight and defining the retail uses on the City Hall property as compatible and complimentary to the Duda development, I don't see the need to approve anything. I'm not even sure what, what's going to be approved tonight if we do approve something. I think we've been going along pretty fine with the progress we have just with these reports. There are certain things that need to be approved tonight and maybe that should be done, but I think overall to blueprint the project is a little confusing. I think we've got to gather more public input and to ensure the community's support and future patronage of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Interesting discussion, woefully incomplete. A couple of points in example. Mr. Kiff has discussed other community centers around Newport. Do we have any thriving retail around the Newport Coast Community Center? I don't think so. Do we have a theater element in the, now what's called the Village Center? We have a theater up on Cliff Drive and seats about 94 people, four to 5,000 square feet. If I'm not mistaken, it's a city-owned building. Very, very few people throughout West Newport know about that. It's been up there for years. Have we even attempted to integrate that into the Village Center concept? We haven't discussed that. Have we discussed as to how much of the residential portion we're going to pull back, given the two variations of the Village Center sizing? That's not been addressed. We also, I think, I strongly agree with Mr. Hill. The revenue stream has to be significant for this center in order for at least him to vote for it, and I would imagine Mr. Curry has some comments I've recollected from the last meeting. You have to ask yourself, the primary question, the initial question is, why do people go to a community center? I believe it's because a community center is inexpensive. It's easy. These are not the same people that are going to come in and spend a ton of money on the retail and the restaurants and the other retail activities in the area. These are people that are going to come in, do their yoga, their basketball and leave. There'll be Starbucks demand, there'll be, you know, things of that nature, but you're not going to cause a thriving demand for all the other retail and amenities that the area is planning to have. So, I have to say, really incomplete analysis. I expected more tonight after the buildup from the last meeting and I think that Mr. Badley hits upon a good point. What is it we're really going to be agreeing on tonight? And do we have really the tools necessary to make those decisions? I don't think so. I think primarily, the first question we have to say is, why, who's the user of a community center and is this the same user that's going to access the rest of the area? And I think that is in conflict right now. I don't think they're the same person. And that will make or break the, the rest of the area. The fact that we haven't considered the Newport Arts Theater and integrating that into this, which would be a perfect additional hook for the area, complements the Regatta Cafe, complements the Lido Theater, complements the restaurants, complements all the other entertainment features of the area, and yet we've left that out of the discussion. That's something, that's a little jewel that only a very small portion of our community has access to or even knows about. I've been in this community for 25 years and I know very, very little about it. Four to 5,000 square foot building and it's not used by hardly anybody. So, we have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Good evening. Linda Klein, Lido Isle. I think a lot of great ideas have been presented tonight. I would like to interject one other thing that comes directly out of my experience recently. I live in the Lido Village area and I use the market and frequently have a slice at Z Pizza. And I would invite you all to spend some time in this area because you may have the experience that I did, which was complete surprise at the number of rehab clients milling around everywhere. They seem to be going to meetings not only on 32nd Street, which I know about, but in several locations in large numbers in the Lido Village area. I didn't know about that. So anyway, I buy my slice, I go out the back to sit down and eat it. Pretty soon, I'm surrounded by smoking, loud-speaking rehab clients who are punctuating their, their conversation really with profanity. And I left, I mean, who wants to eat lunch, even a slice, in 15 minutes and be inhaling that kind of smoke? And I think no matter what we end up putting here with the number of rehab clients that are in that village area, it's enough to blow me out of there and I think it will blow a lot of other people out of there who would spend money. Thank you.
I'm Robin Sinclair from West Newport and I like to think that I represent the past and the present in this area. I remember when Lido Village used to have Christmas parties and Santa Claus would come and we could bring our kids there. This is about 25 years ago and we used to have Halloween parades and contests. So I would love to see a revitalization of the area. We don't have a downtown and I would love to be able to go to this area and consider this downtown rather than going to Fashion Island. I also represent an organization, Boys Hope, Girls Hope, that has so generously been on the receiving end of having an event at the Pavilion Plaza, thanks to the Duda Company. And, so I am one of those nonprofits that would really benefit from having meetings there and having events there and heightening awareness of our organization. So, as a resident and a recipient through the charity work that we do, I really would encourage you to consider revitalization. It's really, really important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Oberman, Oceanfront resident of the peninsula. I, I would echo the comments. I appreciate your action, Mayor Hen, to initiate the concept plan and the council for reviewing the uses. I am one of the people who submitted a lengthy letter, so I would just like to thank you, Councilman Gardner, for mentioning that. And just a couple of things on what I've seen in particular this evening and read from the city. One is relative to the Lido Village Center, I do think it's important to support for whatever the City Hall reuse is, to support the anchors and the commercial success of those anchors. We had talked about that at some of the, during some of the public process and I think it's great that the direction, and I encourage you to go in the direction of facilitating Duda and Lido Village Partners because they represent one of the identified anchors, which is the, the market and that will help to drive the surrounding uses of the kind that we want to see for the residents and to make it a destination for a broader demographic. We're still in suspense about the other anchor destination and in the public process, we had talked about a hotel, but I note in some of the recent material from Collins, that's, that's kind of dragging along. And in looking at this Lido Village Center or any community service center with some type of athletic component or maybe meeting rooms, I have a concern that that may cannibalize on, on the usage that a hotel or may bring to the area. Because a hotel may well want to have a meeting room, some type of fitness facility that a lot of particularly resort-oriented hotels take and they, and they leverage that facility through membership or ability for the community to use as well as hotel guests. And then I could provide specific examples, which I won't tonight. But I, I do again support the destination and urge the council to really pin down and commit to the anchor uses and before a lot of the City Hall decisions are finalized. Just one set of last comments and that is relative to the residential components that are being considered on the City Hall site. I do understand the city's desire to leverage the value of that site as well as to generate the commercial revenue and I do understand and accept the fact that that will most probably include some residential component. I would encourage the council to look at some type of market rate uses, residential uses that are compatible with the surrounding community and in particular the Lido element of that. I would encourage the council not to consider institutional type uses because that is really, quite frankly, going to be a kiss of death if you're trying to build a commercial area that's vital and that will be used. So I would say affordable housing and some of the other assisted living, those are all important types of housing elements in our city, but this is not the place for it. So, that's my two cents. Thank you very much again.
Thank you, Denise.
I'm Will Longyear from Lido. Several of us got together the other evening from West Newport, Central Peninsula and Lido and hashed over our druthers. And one of them was, to mirror some of the other comments, that the, that open space be considered. And I don't know if it's practical or not, but I've been to Spain and to Morocco and things and they would have a central plaza that would be kind of a pedestrian, participative pedestrian place. They could, they rigged up big screens and they have television things that are going on and, you know, soccer games and other kinds of things. They have peripheral stands for coffee and stuff like that. And it was open space. It was not parking area. It was just walking space and in places where people were milling around, thoroughly enjoying themselves, they're dancing, they're doing all kinds of things. And it was, if, in order to put in housing and other kinds of things into that same area, it probably would have to go up. And we thought that would be better to go up with high-quality housing, certainly not assisted housing or, or low, you know, government-supported housing, because those people don't, can't afford to buy things. So there was those two ideas that came out of our group. The other thing that's of particular interest to the Lido people is that the city or that the Lido Villas seem to be taking over, being taken over by Recovery Home Services. And to me, that would be a kiss of death for the retail element. There is vans parked all over the place, there's people milling around, smoking and they're not, they're not friendly people to be around and that's part of where they've been in their life and so forth. They need to be taken care of, but I'm not sure that Lido Village can economically afford to have so much of it all concentrated in one place. So, I don't know what you all can do about that. There's something to be, beware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Willis.
I'm one of the owners over at Vialito Drug at three four four five Vialito. I'd just like to thank you for your efforts in all of this to make this happen. I think eventually it will get worked out where you'll have the plans for everybody around here. We've been around here about 14 years operating as a retailer over here and we plan on staying here a lot longer and I think it'll be a great thing if you do move forward with it and make it possible for us as retailers to have other retailers out there. It'd be really nice to have some neighbors. Right now, I look out the front door and I don't see a lot, except for dark windows and stuff, so I would appreciate you moving forward with it. Okay? Thank you.
Hi again, Laurie Morris, West Newport. I didn't have one of your little plot plans or the, those, yeah, those I, we didn't, a lot of people didn't get these, but from up here on the screen, it showed quite a lot of meeting rooms on one whole side that was going to be separated from other portions of this plan. Myself and a lot of other people in West Newport are really concerned as to what uses will be for those meeting rooms. As Denise had said, of course, some of that would be used by a hotel if that were allowed, but at this point in time, even with the revitalization and putting in this, all this brand-new concept, we do have a huge problem with drug rehabilitation community that needs to grow their business. And to do that, they would need meeting places. As of now, they meet on the beach, they pretty much meet wherever they want to. The Starbucks has been co-opted, just stopping the other day, having a cup of coffee and listening to the conversations of intake patients that were being talked to there at the Starbucks. That whole area has been pretty much corrupted by Morningside and we have seen that, as in Canary Village, that was taken over by Silver Living by the Sea. That had to be calmed down and taken back and, you know, the use changed. So for residents who actually are going to be impacted by these uses, I, I like the idea of, you know, basketball courts and that sort of thing, but who's going to be using that? And I think that a large portion of that will be taken over and corrupted by the rehab industry. To grow the business, you need room and right now, they are packed into the Lido Village. The vans, you go over to try to have just, you know, the business. The vans, you go over to try to have, just, you know, the businesses that are there now, they have no way of getting people in and out to park. I'm concerned with the parking issue. I didn't see a lot of that talked about. Probably that will be future, but we didn't, a lot more parking. Summertime is horrendous down there. So yet, no matter what goes in, parking is going to be an issue, and that needs to be studied quite a bit more than we are, I guess, at this point. But I like what Mr. Hills had said about the canals. I think the canals are a bad idea. I think that's going to be a huge liability, although it would be a beautiful thing. We have a lot of bars, and we're going to have a lot of people in those canals. It could be a liability. That, that was the first thing that came to my mind. So water feature would be great, but not canals. The Skyway Bridge, I'm not real familiar with that. That doesn't sound, it sounds like it would be, take them over. But I do think we need a way to get people back and forth across the street safely. We know we have an issue in West Newport with safety of crossing the street, and so that, even if it's not a sky bridge, we need something to be able to move people back and forth safely. So with that, I just, I like what's happening. I'm grateful for what's happening, and I think the anchors do need to be, that hotel thing sounds really good, so if that could be discussed, too. So thank you very much.
Lori, just a question. A good point about the meeting rooms, and obviously, once they're open, we can't say any, well, you get to use them and you don't get to use them. But I'm just wondering whether, if it's a city-controlled building with staff there, whether we might not be, well, actually, it might be almost a benefit as opposed to the beach where we have basically no control. So, okay, your meeting's over, you may now leave the building. So there's that aspect to it. It might actually give us a bit more control.
It would.
I don't know. I mean, I'm not promoting it, but I'm.
Yeah, I understand. That is true, but as we saw with Hoag Hospital, they actually stopped having their meetings there because it became so raucous and unwieldy, and they couldn't control it. So I don't think that even if you had that, and I wasn't sure what the revenue streaming was going to be on those, if they were going to be rented out, you know, or if it was going to be free, or how that was going to be used. If it's free, it will be, okay, so, but they still need places, and they'll pay whatever it takes to have places to put people in recovery just to have those meetings. I think a lot of it would be taken over by that. But like I said, Hoag, using that even with Hoag would be an issue for the residents. So if that's, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Lori. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. I'd like to bring this back to council, and I'd like to suggest a motion, and then, so that we've just got some structure here to talk about and see if we can't reach a conclusion. It's too easy to be all over the map. So I'm going to offer the following motion, that we approve the Plan 5B in concept, subject to the following modifications. That the Village Center be of a size of approximately 15,000 square feet, that there be a residential element at market rate, that is a market-rate residential element, roughly of a size compatible with the 15,000-square-foot Village Center. And I believe that's in the range of 80 dwelling units. How many? Eighty-five dwelling units, roughly. These are all approximations. Remember, this is a concept plan. And that parking for the party boats be required to be satisfied from locations outside the greater Lido Village planning area, and that that would be something that would be implemented upon redevelopment in the Lido Village area. That the specific planning and sizing, programming, and configuration of the Village Center be only determined following staff recommendation that takes into consideration a master plan approach to the government facilities on the west side of Newport Beach, such that it's all, all of the programming is complementary and not duplicative, considering the west-side center, the Marina Park, other, perhaps, the art complex, whatever. You draw it up, you provide a staff recommendation for how the master planning of those facilities should be, and a net result of that, the residue of that, then would be a specific proposal for the Village Center to be included in this concept plan, and then move forward on that basis. That was a lot of words, but I think you get my gist. And with regard to the sky bridge, that it be eliminated from Plan B, and that with regard to the canal, we retain a green-belt public area as represented in Plan 5B and reserve for a future time the feasibility and applicability of actually having a water element in that. But that we preserve the planning capability for it in the event that feasibility in the future is available. With the issue, with regard to the issue of retail on the City Hall site, I don't see the need to address that. I think we have the elements that we've established here. We don't need to preclude it or include it. We just have, we have a Plan 5B, and that's our, that's our launching point. So that would be my motion, and I'd be glad to accept a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. And then conversation about that. Counsel comment?
Yes. I've got some concerns about the, about the, about the community center, particularly your motion that it's 15,000 square feet. I'd be more comfortable if you said something like up to 15,000 square feet. This is the first time I've seen this, is tonight, and it looks to me like we're putting 10 pounds into a 5-pound can here. And you can't park it to begin with. It causes me some concerns, and taking a look at the size of the site that's there, typically, you'd probably put about a 7,750-square-foot building there. So I've got some concerns about, about that. I agree that taking a look at these community centers on a global basis is something that we need to do, take a look at it for the whole west side of the city here and decide what we, what we really want to do. For myself, like I said at the last meeting, I'd always envisioned it would have a Newport Coast-type of community center out on the Banning Ranch property, whether it was open space or developed, that there, we were going to have a community park out there. That's certainly our stated goal, and that we would have a community center out there. And so I start looking at Marina Park, a community center here, a community center out in Banning Ranch, and wondering if that's the best use of our, of our resources. So I've really got some concerns about that, and would like to see more, more flexibility as far as what happens, happens with that property. Otherwise, I'm fine with your, with your motion. I think there's a, you know, this is a concept plan. There's some backbone elements in here, that the, the public open space winding through the property, the pedestrian ways going down to the water. These are all the backbone elements that will help provide cohesiveness to this plan as the details get worked out in the coming, in the coming months here. But I would like to see a little bit more flexibility on that, on that community services center.
I'd be glad, I'd be glad to amend my motion to be stated up to 15,000 square feet. The specifics to be determined based upon the plan that I described. Counsel, excuse me, I said Mr. Rosansky could go.
Well, actually, I'm glad to hear that there's more flex, actually, I'm glad to hear there's more thoughtfulness in the discussion of the community center in general, because this is, I felt, always felt that this is a significant civic asset, and that we need to have a significant civic presence here. I guess I would go the opposite direction of, I guess, where Councilman Celich is, and that I would say, I don't know why we're putting any square footage restriction on it at this point in time. As we, I think, are all agreeing, we need to have the city staff go and assess our needs on a global level, not just for the community center, but lifeguard station and some other topics, I think, you know, I've discussed with the city manager. And so I just like, and at this point in time, I don't know why we need to put a square footage on it. Maybe it'll be 15,000, maybe it'll be 12,000, maybe it'll be 20,000. We need to put a full-size gym in there with, you know, a tall ceiling. I don't know that we need to make that decision at this point in time. I don't know that we have enough information, as many of the, the public discussed tonight. We don't have enough information. But we, as to the elements that you identified as to the adjoining property, those folks need to move forward. I agree, we need to keep the access on Finley. I don't think we need to restrict our property to retail or non-retail. Certainly, if the Duda people thought it was important enough for them to restrict our property, I would hope that they'd pay us for that restriction. So along the lines of what Councilman Hill was talking about, that's a way to finance a community center. You don't want us to put retail on our property? Great, give us $5 million bucks. We'll be happy to restrict it. So they're laughing over there.
Six.
Six? I hear six. Do I hear seven? So, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunities for further discussion here. I don't know why we're limiting the community center to 15,000 square feet. So I would be supportive of your motion if you just eliminate the square footage altogether, and just say that we're going to come back with further proposals from the city manager at the time he feels he's able to address those issues. And lastly, as to the canal aspect and the waterway, you know, I think it's important to preserve the, the public access nature of that, that portion of the property. I think something that we have lost in discussion was, and what kind of excited me, was the ability to connect the bay with, well, the main harbor with the, with the very back bay, and to help with an environmental issue that we have there with the flushing of the harbor and the, and the very far reaches of the back bay. So, you know, it doesn't have to be a surface water feature, but I think we still owe it to ourselves and the residents in that area and that live-along, you know, on that back end of the bay, to further explore some type of connectivity, whether it be underground. You know, we can still have above-ground grass, but have a pipe or whatever goes underground. I'm sure it'd be an expensive venture, but then again, I'm sure there may be grants or other funding available for environmental, you know, reasons that might help support that. So I would hope that that would also survive and warrant further study, as this is an opportunity to do that. And once these projects are built and the buildings are built, that opportunity will cease to exist. And so I, quite honestly, I don't even know if it's feasible, but certainly, I think it's worthy of some further study. So those are my comments. I would hope that you would entertain changing your motion to just eliminating the square footage requirement altogether.
If you're doing a pipe, it would be better to do a pipe to the ocean, probably.
Well, I think there are issues, or there are physical problems with doing that, but hooking it up to the bay, I don't know that those exist. Although, it's worthy of discussion, certainly.
Okay. Let me hear from the rest of council, and then we'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, because you've really been the leader in getting this process moving, and I think it's been an excellent process for the community and for the city to move forward. I actually would agree with Mr. Rosansky, but for a different reason. I think we should take the square footage requirement out, because I think we ought to take it and consider zero in terms of the community center. The fact of it is, is that there's a lot more enthusiasm, it seems to me, up here for the community center than there is in the community. We've heard from people who have spoken that there is a tremendous amount of ambivalence about what would go in there, who would use it, how it would be used. I think we heard from staff that the best use would be to move the basketball court from its current facility into an upstairs facility here. And then you really have to wonder is, is that the best use of a community center in this particular spot? We would then put housing over in the, in the, in the former center site, but why not put housing on this site, where the people can shop in the restaurants, can shop in the center, can go to the theaters? Actually, I thought Mr. Rush's idea about a community theater was actually a pretty good idea. Maybe that's how we ought to actualize the community aspect of this site. And, Mr. Mayor, I thought your idea about market-rate housing was an excellent idea, and I think we ought to look at that, and I think we look, need to look at that without, without boundaries here in terms of the site for how we, how we address that. I do support the concept of a master plan for west-side facilities. I think that's a good idea. But that ought to include the fact that maybe we don't have them here, that we just keep and enhance what we have at the current basketball site, and that we enhance and use the revenue from housing developed here to make an even better community center at Marina Park, because we could do that also, and just as Mr. Hill suggests, use the revenue from that to finance Marina Park at a substantial savings to the city. I do agree with the speakers in the audience who said that the sky bridge and the canal, I think the canal is an interesting idea, but probably a bit too much of a reach, and I think a green belt, green belt is probably a better, better approach here. And I think, you know, thinking about how we can make this, using, leveraging off the Lido Theater to have a, a public entertainment venue here, a community theater or a music wall of some sort. If I were going to put a community facility here, I would want it to be more along those lines, you know, reuse and redirection of this facility, for example, might accomplish that. But I do believe that we need to have a master plan for west-side community facilities. I do agree for residential component, as you suggested, Mr. Mayor. And as for the party boats, we may be a little bit premature on that, on that decision, but that needs to be incorporated into the plan as we move forward.
Okay? Thank you. Councilman DeGel.
Yes, I agree very much with having a systems approach, and there's a lot of properties and institutional uses to put into the mix. And I was a little bit unclear as to what's meant in the motion as far as, you know, looking at the community centers. Does that sort of mean that, that all of them are staying, including Marina Park, and that so long as there's not conflicting uses? I mean, when I would look at systems approach, I would say, you know, that's on the table as well, because we have a lifeguard facility that's going to need a new home. So what is meant by, you know, in terms of how we're looking at it this from a systems approach?
Well, I'll give you my point of view, and staff will speak up as they need to, but I, for sure, flexibility on programmatic use of all of those facilities, all of them should be at play as to the programmatic use for each of them, so that we're sure that we don't have duplication or omission on our programs. So all of them are in play in that respect. Only some of them, in my view, would be in play as to redevelopment or substantial change from what is currently planned. And in my view, Marina Park should stay roughly the same, well, should stay the same as it's designed, but that there should be flexibility on programs employed there. And that flexibility could extend to a lifeguard, lifeguard offices being there in, in place of some other use, but not entirely, you know, as a component of use in that, in that facility. So that's how I see that.
That would be my only comment at this stage.
Okay. Any other, Councilman Rosansky?
Yeah, just to further amend my, my comments, and I did mean to talk about this before, and there's been a lot of talk about, you know, Rush brought it up about generating, well, generating revenue in general, making this a revenue-producing property, and making the community center pay for itself and things like that. I don't know any community facility in this town that paid for itself. Newport Coast didn't even pay for itself, because we, city kicked in money on top of the money that the residents put aside when they were annexed to the city. So although I, I do believe it's important, and certainly, that's a goal, and that's been one of my goals in trying to potentially consolidate the community centers into one central facility that could be greater than the sum of its parts. And to save operationally, I think in the, in the exhibits that we've seen here today, there are some operational savings, closing some of the other facilities, reprogramming Marina Park to a lifeguard use, as opposed to having a community center halfway down the peninsula that is not going to have nearly the utility that a community center would over here, and usability. You know, as far as the functionality of the center here, whether it's revenue-producing or not, I mean, certainly, there's always opportunities for that. I wouldn't, you know, despite what some of the residents have said, be scared by the fact that group home people might use the facility. I mean, there's 80,000 residents in this town, and I don't know how many group home people, certainly less than 500. And so I wouldn't want to throw the, you know, the baby out with the bathwater here. So certainly, it's a consideration. And I don't know that we've identified programmatic uses for any Village Center. You know, we've talked about some, and that, I think, is, again, for further discussion down the road, what the facility would actually look like and what constituency it would serve. So with that, I'll reiterate my request that you remove the square footage requirement or limitation, and just leave it as community center and potentially some residential here as well.
Councilman Gardner?
One thing that we had talked about last time, and it wasn't part of your motion, I don't believe, was the lot line adjustment. And did you have, did you want that as part of it, or did I miss it?
Yeah, I should have clarified that earlier. My motion really comes on top of the consensuses, consensuses?
Consensis?
Consensai, that we reached at the last meeting.
Okay.
And so those, those would be incorporated, you know, as assumptions here behind this Program 5B.
Okay. Well, then, I did have a question on that.
With the exception of the retail that I mentioned in this.
Right, right. We got a letter We got a letter from Larry Tucker, I don't know if staff got it, bringing up a lot of issues, so I, that would, those are things that we would certainly look at before anything took place.
Okay, Councilman Selig?
I will get back to you.
Do you want to say something on that thing? Yeah, my support of the motion on the community center doesn't mean that I've bought into the community center completely on it. I mean, I think we need to take a look at it, but like I said, it seems to me that trying to put a community center here, we're trying to put too much in too small of a space. I'd like to see what the staff comes up with, but my gut tells me it's, at the end of the day, it's going to be, it's going to be too much here, and so, we're going to have to look for, you know, another use, whether it's an expansion of housing, or although it's, you know, not said yes or no, you know, more retail here. I don't know, it could be a pad sitting out there. So, but I think, you know, I think we need to take a greater look at the community center part of it and then make that decision. So, you know, when I'm saying supporting, it doesn't mean I'm absolutely buying into the idea of a community center here. And then, one other thing is on the lot line adjustment, are we going to talk about the mechanics of that at all? Because I do have some concerns on how we're going to proceed with that along the lines of the letter we got from Larry Tucker.
Yeah, one of the things that I'd like to do, I'd like to land, I'd like to conclude on the motion on the table, but then I'd spend another minute or two talking about next steps.
Okay.
So, with regard, well, Councilman Hill.
I would like to put on my architect's hat for a moment, if I may, and not trying to be cute, you're all accurate. A master plan is a master plan. It is a living document that changes constantly. And I think what this is telling me is that there are very few givens on this. There is a two-story, I think it's two-story, office building that's going to be there. There's a theater that's going to be there. And everything else, except for the Lido Village area, is, in general, what this master plan shows. I mean, it says there's going to be a market that's on the northeast section of the property. It says that there's going to be Finley Avenue, which we're going to figure out how to share equally. It says there's going to be some kind of housing element. As each of these are played out, they will change constantly. They have a market tenant in mind at this moment that will come in and apply their standards to this and say, "Well, I will sign this lease if you..." And then, those negotiations may fall out, and another market tenant will come in and say, "Well, I'll sign this lease, but you have to do this." So, this will change constantly. These lines aren't meant to be real lines, they're meant to be bubbles, they're meant to be master plan thoughts as to how you would flow through the site and these types of things. So, when this project is built, the only thing that you can be guaranteed of is it won't be like this. It'll be similar to this. And so, as a result, I think that arguing over the square footage of something is kind of academic, because it will evolve as all the rest of these questions are researched and thought out. When we look at the synergistic programmatic aspects of all of the public facilities in West Newport Beach, we will be smarter as we garner that information, and we'll be able to make a decision as to what this should be. When we start talking to someone that's dealing with housing, we will become much smarter as to what that will need to be to meet market needs. As the Duda Company evolves and looks at not just a market, but other retail compatible needs, that will evolve as well. So, to me, I think what has been accomplished in a remarkable period of time is a master plan that probably the most important thing is the statements that it makes about the outside spaces, as it does about where the buildings go so as to allow the outside spaces. And I think that's what it's all about. So, I think that, you know, a motion to approve this as a concept of moving forward, and then the detail will be as the individual plans come in for specific evaluation, as to, "Here's where we want the road." No, that was not part of our master plan, that was not part of our agreement. Those things will be ironed out at that point in time.
I certainly agree with all of that, and although I'm sure it was not your intention to diminish what we have in fact accomplished, though, with establishing the main elements of a concept plan here, this is all very important, and it provides, even though it's not cast in stone, it'll be a living document, it's a very important launching pad now for the rest of this to happen. This is the release point for specific planning that will in fact result in actual redevelopment and revitalization. And so, it's a really important juncture here that we have. And I've thought about it, Councilmember Rozansky, and I'm still on the spot of up to 15,000 square feet, I would like to leave it there. I would, though, like to ask staff to include the potential for Banning Ranch facility to be included in the master plan discussion. I recognize Banning Ranch is still even less of a concept than perhaps than what we've got here, but, you know, I don't want to lose sight of that. That is a substantial potential here on the west side of the city that we don't want to lose sight of. So, that would be my motion in light of all of this. If there is further discussion, I'm glad to entertain it, but otherwise, I would call the question. Okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wowee, unanimous? That's great.
He wore his down.
I think, yeah, I'm sure it's unanimous with all, everyone in the public, too, so. Okay, now, next steps. There was some next step discussion here in the staff memo. I guess what, here's what I would like to see, and this would be open for a little bit more discussion, too. I'd like to see this West Side facilities plan come back to council as rapidly as possible. And I'm guessing, I think you've already done a lot of thinking about this. I'm guessing that's not going to be too long from now. And then, I would also like to see an action plan for the other major components that need to move forward here. You know, I'd like to be, and when I say action plan, I'd like to understand, you know, we're not talking about the imperial we here, we're talking about who's going to do it. I'd like to see a plan that identifies who is going to do the major steps and when those steps might be targeted for accomplishment, so that we can all see here how this rollout is going to look, at least sitting here today, recognizing that that, too, will change as time goes by. So...
That includes the information, the questions about the lot line adjustment and that sort of thing?
Yes, you know, a recommendation for the best way to proceed on that.
Yeah, let me summarize a little bit more. It would be, we'd show you when and how and who. We'll prepare the design guidelines for the overall site, preparing a specific plan, the timeline for that, preparing and acting on the land swap, and we'll, maybe I'll involve Councilmember Selig and Larry Tucker's email and go from there if you had some specific input in our preparation. Happy to hear that, and bring that back to you in a plan. I think that covers everything.
And then, you know, the various other steps here, there could be general plan, you know, the smash of things, each of which are time-consuming and work-intensive, that will result in what we need to have. Yeah, thanks.
My major concern is that there's not an expectation there's going to be an immediate lot line adjustment, because we're not going to be out of this facility for a couple of years, and we have some kind of a memorandum of understanding that with all the conditions in it, and the lot line adjustment would be recorded, and we take care of all the due diligence that's involved in doing a lot line adjustment. But I don't know that there's some level of expectation there's going to be a lot line adjustment almost immediately here.
My concern is that we arrive at an agreement that allows the Duda Company to move forward with what they need to do to nail down a tenant, nail down a design.
Well, never you would do that.
Yeah, so, I don't know what the exact form of that is, but it just, it just needs to meet that requirement, that they are fully able to move forward with certainty about what they're going to get. Okay, any other? All right, I'd like to thank Tim Collins for having done a fabulous job on this, and Todd Lerner and WHA, I am so pleased that we hired the right resources to make this happen. You've done just yeoman's work here to bring this all to a conclusion in a five-month period of time, to the extent that we have a conclusion. It's just great work, and there really has been a tremendous amount of public outreach and public input, and I think we see tonight the impact of public input. This concept has been shaped, no doubt, by the public input we received, and I appreciate all of the people that have helped with that. And with that, I think we're on to agenda item number 24.
I'll just give folks a few minutes to clear out before we talk about restructuring.
I'm sure there's a whole bunch of people out in the lobby that are waiting to come in, so, for this next agenda item.
A very brief one, Mr. Mayor and council members. So, this item before you, item 24, is a request for your approval, because that's directed whenever we change significant position titles and position descriptions, for some staffing changes. And it brings forth a community development department instead of separate building and planning departments. You see a proposed organization chart back there. It also proposes the job description for that individual, the community development director. It also combines some, a little bit of change to the city manager's office, including an additional focus and a consolidation of our IT assets, that we have information technology, folks in the library, and the police department, the fire department, and in admin services, the bulk in admin services. And the thought is to have them, not pulled away from where they are, but consolidated in the structure so that we can better prioritize our staffing and our capital choices associated with IT, because it's a little bit too random right now. So, this is a continued step in our restructuring. I think it's an important one, especially with the community development function to improve customer service, and I'm looking forward to getting the right folks in those positions. We've been blessed to have Joel Fick with us for the last few months, but he's told me he's not staying for many more months, so, he's got a good vacation plan. So, again, this implements those changes. Welcome your questions.
Councilman Selig?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you've been wanting this for a long time.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to see it. I guess, I guess I don't understand what the deputy community development director is in this organization chart versus the building, you know, the building manager. Just looking through the duties and everything, it almost seems like the deputy community development director is somewhat a duplication of the community development director to some degree. I'm just having a hard time understanding. Maybe you can explain how Dana's going to fit into this whole structure, because, you know, I've been used to dealing with the city manager, and Sharon Wood, and now Dana, and then Patty Temple or David Leppo, so, you're kind of throwing in another position in here, if you will, in the mix, and just trying to understand how it's all going to work.
Sure, Councilmember Selig, good questions. Remember, we did remove one assistant city manager position, and that position was the position that was more focused on planning and building, so that position is gone. Dana has been troubleshooting in that department, as Joel's been here, because there have been enough issues with that that I wanted her to focus on that. She really functions more as an operational advisor to the whole city. So, I really want this person, the community development director, to be the lead in anything that comes up in terms of planning and building and economic development and code enforcement. The deputy there, at least at this point in our vision, is still a high-level position, a backup that oversees, is really the second-hand person, man or woman, that oversees other things, including, sorry, oversees the entirety of the department, including building. So, instead of having two, number two people, one over planning and building, we have one number two person overseeing everything. And I think, at least when we look at this closely, there's probably plenty for those two people to do, especially with the assistant city manager position not having anything to do with community development anymore.
So, to make it work in my simple mind, that Dana is like you used to be, and then this community development director is like what Sharon Wood did? Is that kind of how it should work?
I used to be more of a projects kind of guy. Dana will certainly be working on some projects, but her focus is more on improving the organization and its efficiency, almost like a chief operating officer. And I get to deal with you folks more and the community more, kind of looking upward while Dana looks inward into the organization. But, yeah, she won't be somebody that's focusing like Sharon did on planning and building.
Okay. And then, what considerations did you give to bringing in the planning functions of traffic engineering into this community development area, and then also the fire marshal aspects of going over our codes, particularly with the conflicts that arise between building and fire code administration?
Some consideration, and as I say some, I mean that we need to continue to look at that, to make sure that we are the most customer-friendly we can be, and whether that means some seamless look, but seamless association with the fire marshal and/or traffic engineering, I know that's an issue that I'll continue to look at. I didn't want to set it in stone yet, as I look at the structure, because I'd like to start with this. At the same time as I say that, there are aspects of these functions that could change significantly, too, such as contracting out, something we're going to be looking at hard in some of these areas, and I kind of want to set this in place, look at contracting out for some functions before I really look at adding more elements to it. So, maybe I'm being overly cautious, but step-by-step kind of thing here.
Okay. Well, I'm really happy to see us take the step in this direction. I think that by having a community development director, that we're going to have someone that's going to have some administrative authority here to help deal with the conflicts we have with building and planning, so, I'm looking forward to seeing it put in place.
Councilman Gardner?
Yeah, I do have a bit of a concern about contracting out economic development services. And I'll just, the two reasons I have, one is, I remember for the peninsula area that we did an outside contract about, to bring business in, and it was just a waste of money, because they were one-size-fits-all, let's bring in Banana Republic, and like, that's not going to fit. So, there wasn't that knowledge of what the area was like. And the second part of it is, big compliments I've gotten, as far as, gee, the city's doing a great job, has been when someone, a business, is trying to do something through the building department or the planning department, and the economic development team has helped them, has walked them through, and I'm wondering how an outside consultant would be in that kind of position, or do we have, are we figuring we're going to have all our problems answered? We're not going to need that kind of assistance now in the future. So, that was just, those are two concerns that were raised when I saw this.
Good concerns and comments, and I don't think this city and the city council has appropriately defined what you think of as economic development. It's different from many places. We don't have redevelopment, so it's not, it's not business attraction in terms of incentives. But what is economic development to you? Is it helping someone through the process? So, I would argue that community development should be a simple enough process, if we do it right, that you wouldn't need that help, although you could have a business liaison that's the key person in that, in that department, or an existing staff member that knows, you know what, I'm here to help businesses go through our process. So, I'd like to have that conversation with the council and with EDC. I think that's something Councilmember Hill has stepped up to say, is, where should we be going with economic development? And then, once we decide... And then, once we decide where we want to go, then I think we can decide whether it should be in-house or outside and what the best resources.
Councilman Hill?
I would like to congratulate you on this, on this thought process and this move. I think it's, it's something that's been long overdue and, and I think it can be very exciting. And it's a darn good thing because we just built a building for you to do it. So, or the process of. Two things. I guess I would see part of the, potentially the deputy community development director's role as being the omnibus man for business through the process, to a certain extent. An overview, a position that, that could help ferret and, and get out of the difficulties that we've all witnessed in coordination, fire, and planning and, and traffic and these types of things. My overall comment on this is, I don't think that the economic development function has been placed correctly. And, and I would see the economic development function reporting directly to the community development director. I think it's that level and that important of a, of an activity. And, and I think that then, in the essential job duties, that there would be a bullet dedicated to economic development. And short of that, I would see some of the bullets that could have economic development added into it. But I think a bullet dedicated to it would be a, a more proper activity. And then, as we do move forward to rethink the economic development activity of the city, I think that, I agree with your comment, that, that that will be the time to evaluate whether or not that could possibly be an outsourced activity. Because I think it could be. I think it, I think that the economic development activity is a whole lot of things. And I think we're doing many of them, but we're not doing all of them. And, and so, I think that, that's an evaluation to take place.
Councilman Curry?
Well, Dave, I, I'd like to congratulate you and Dana for the job you've done on this reorganization. I'd also like to congratulate Joel, who has been, just, just done a tremendous job for the city in the time that he's been with us. I was in Anaheim this morning and they miss you up there, Joel. And we are so proud to have you and for the job that you've done in improving this whole operation of our development services. You know, this is one of the areas identified in our 2007, '08 citizen satisfaction survey is needing improvement. We've focused on it. And I think this reorganization is going to go a great way towards making community development a more customer-friendly, a more efficient and a more effective operation within the city government. My only comment on the job description is I'd like to see making a, a more explicit customer-centric focus as part of the job, in terms of improving the processes and the customer experience in community development, so that it's emphasized as part of the job description, that that's why we're making these changes in reorganizations. But I applaud you for getting this to the finish line.
Councilman DeGel?
Yes. Also, sorry to see Joel Fick, our acting community development director, go. Very professional and seasoned and, and helped to modernize our city. So, thank you. And some of the modernizing that I see that's really essential is with the IT and the permit tracking and, and really taking some steps forward with that. And then also appreciate the, the sort of openness as far as any contracting out. And I don't know if it would be explored even, sort of multi-city types of services, whether it's building inspection and what kind of is the state-of-the-art out there. And then also appreciate the comments about traffic engineering. I think there needs to be better integration with the, the planning components there. As far as economic development, agree with Councilman Hill's comments. He really pioneered that in our community. And I, I would agree that that deputy community development director, he needs to understand, you know, oversee all the areas. And if we're doing too much hand-holding, then, you know, we need to look at that. So, he, he, he or she would be the person that could do that. So, those would be some of my comments. And I, I think it looks like, you know, the idea is that, that things would be better integrated and that's a step forward. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, Joel, I for one, I'm glad to see you go.
He's not leaving yet. I think he's got a couple more months with him.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. Just kidding. But in a way I am, because, you know, we're going to really set this plan in place and move forward. I think it's a good plan. Would encourage the development of an IT strategic plan. We've talked about that. I know you intend to do that, Dave. Just wanted to emphasize that, that, you know, it's really important for us to have that roadmap in front of us before we go too far down the line in making changes. And so, anyway, I would like to invite public comment on this agenda item. Do we have anyone that cares to comment?
My name is Jim Mosher. As a taxpayer, I'm not sure I understand how one cuts costs by placing a new high-paid manager over the heads of the planning and building departments without eliminating one of the other of those. As one who's read the charter, I'm totally baffled by what's going on here tonight. My understanding is the city manager manages the administrative department of the city, but he does not have the power to create or alter it. Section 601 of our city charter says that the power to create, consolidate, alter, and abolish departments, divisions, and offices is the exclusive prerogative of the council. So, it's fine that it's before you. But it also says that those changes have to be made by ordinance. And I'm not aware of any ordinance that is before you tonight. Previous city staffs appear to have been as casual as the present one in effecting and asking for approval of these reorganizations. The departments that are properly instituted by ordinance appear to be listed in chapter 2 dash, 2 dot 12 of the municipal code. They bear only a vague resemblance to the ones that are mentioned in the city manager's budget documents. We're in a slightly different city organization chart that's on the city website. For example, the director of human resources, who is a co-author of the staff report that you're being asked to, to approve tonight, heads a department that has apparently never been instituted by ordinance. Likewise, the city manager has something he calls utilities department. And according to our municipal code, that is not a department, it's a division. The head of that division is supposed to report to the public works director. And the recreation and senior services functions are supposed to be under something called a community services department, which is not found on any of the organization charts. And whose director is identified as the chief librarian. That's why I asked you earlier if you understood who the department directors are, who you're giving the authority to approve contracts to. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hunt, do you have, have any response to that? I, I think you may have found your next adjunct, you know, legal department person.
I think you know. But the, yes, my response is he's 100% correct. We have to change the ordinance. This matters before you to get your direction. We already have a draft ordinance in my office waiting to take further action. And once we get clear direction, then we will move forward and bring an ordinance to you that re, that confirms the city manager's plan that has been approved by the city council. And yes, this has been not taken careful care with this issue over the last many years for the city. And so, we need to clean this up as the city evolves and at the appropriate time.
Okay.
I'll move approval.
As you do that, counsel, I'd note, I appreciate the comments about adding a customer service and an economic development bullet to the job description. I'll do that as a part of your motion.
I should ask, is there any other public comment here? Okay. With that, any further counsel comment? If not, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. We are now up to public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a comment on a non-agenda item?
Good evening. My name is Joe O'Hara and I represent Protector Park. Apropos of Mayor Hahn's comments earlier about the time it takes to get these projects underway, I wanted to remind you, council members, that it's been six and a half years since a hotel was rejected on the Marina Park site by the voters and the Marina Park concept came to fruition. Actually, it's been 54 years since a blue ribbon panel appointed by the council recommended a park on the Marina Park site. Many projects have come and gone since then. Where I am cynic, and some of our members are, I might be inclined to think that the whole Marina Park project has been expertly slow-walked. And I sometimes get the feeling, as many others do, that the various coastal commissions are being used as something of a smokescreen. This has been a long process, six and a half years to get to where we are now. Seems to be a bit out of the ordinary. We'd like to see a status report of what, where we stand at the moment on the Marina Park situation. We'd like to see emphasis on the resource analysis. Who's responsible for what's going to happen here? Who's expediting? Where are the roadblocks? For example, I, I understand from Dave that one of the roadblocks is an issue over the community center and its marine orientation. Now, that could be solved easily based on earlier discussions this evening. We'd also like to know where the project fits in the city's priorities and timing. It's, many things have come and gone. Many large projects are in, in the works and nothing has, nothing has happened up there. We'd like to get some answers on that subject. Thank you.
Well, with respect to your comment, I can tell you that it's not the case that nothing has been happening. There's been a lot of work and I think we're going to see some fruits of that labor. My guess is it'll be time, not very long for now, from now, for us to have a, another meeting of the Marina Park committee wherein we'll update what's going on. But, you know, we're working very hard on it. We've got, it's not a smokescreen in terms of dealing with the state lands commission and the coastal commission to move these projects forward. It's just plain difficult. So, but I do think we will be able to answer all of your questions. I do think also, though, it probably is another month or so before we're really in the right position to do that and give you a good update. Would you agree with that, Dave? Or what's your view?
Yes. And I, I think at that time, we'll, we'll have some, city attorneys been working with the state lands commission. We've been working with the coastal commission. And we'll be able to have a good look at the facility's financing plan as to where this appears. It's, it's still in the, the first and early part of that, but it'd be good to have that communication with folks like Joe.
Okay. Good. Public comment? Hello, Craig?
Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's good to see your faces and a new face. My name is Craig Morissette and I'm a resident and homeowner on the peninsula, longtime resident. Seems like the only time we have quality time is when Marina Park is, is in my sentences. And that's the case tonight. My comments are on behalf of the Central Newport Beach Community Association, which is over 350 member households on the peninsula. What I, what I, I want to express our considerable disappointment that Marina Park wasn't on the, wasn't on the coastal commission's agenda in January. You know, as you're probably aware, coastal commission comes to Los Angeles, Orange County about twice a year. And the next opportunity now is in October. And, and there's tremendous concern because that's roughly nine months from now. You know, we would, we would encourage you, counsel and the city manager, to, to make sure you have the sufficient resources, the right consultants, and, and also clear direction on priorities. So, you can work through the land commission, lands commission issues and the coastal commission issues. You know, I was told by staff, city staff, that there's potentially opportunities to take it to coastal commission without waiting for the October meeting. I know that there's going to be one in Santa Barbara in April. June is Marina Del Rey, which would be a great opportunity. And of course, central coast is in August. So, you know, the, the members of the Central Newport Beach Community Association, we're ready, we're willing, we'll do whatever we can at the time you need us to help, to nudge the coastal commission, the staff, whatever we can do to help things along. But I'd really, I'd like to be celebrating a groundbreaking of a, of a new city park in October and not talking about another missed opportunity. And thank you for listening and acting on our comments and as appropriate.
You've been very patient.
Oh, it's been interesting. My name's Diane Romick. I live in the Newport Coast section of Newport Beach. And I'm here representing thousands of homeowners, hundreds, thousands of residents, hundreds of homeowners, in Pacific Ridge of Newport Coast. This is kind of a silly card for a serious issue. This is a card for Detective Prowdy, the police department, and the DA office, with many signatures of thanks to, especially Detective Prowdy. We, as you all might be aware, we had people who attempted adverse possession in our neighborhood, two and a half million dollar house. And these people had the audacity just to move in, change the locks, they did all kinds of horrible things. And I guess typically what happens, it's up to the homeowner to try to evict these people, which just apparently takes forever and a lot of money. And so, kudos to Newport Beach Police Department because they went in, they charged each of these individuals with two counts of felony. And we hope to see them getting a little bit of good justice. So, they've been arrested. I got to watch them be handcuffed and taken out. And if there's any way that you guys can get this card, could you do that? Okay, great. Good. Thank you. Oh, yeah. We really, really appreciate it. Yeah. And thanks to all of you.
Well, hopefully those people will have a new home for a few years after they complete their trial.
We're, we're hoping so. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And some nice new friends.
Okay. All right. Any other, excuse me, Councilman Gardner?
No, I just hope that at some point we can consider moving public comment. It's a long time for people to sit for something like this and to move it earlier in the meeting.
We're going to, we're going to move forward with some thoughts on that. Okay. Any other public comments? Motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.